I'll remind everybody the mission caused to public schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners, and I'll ask you to join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting that was originally scheduled to be only a public hearing on the budget, but because of the circumstances, we are going to get an update on the school closing as well as some business that is we need to take care of. Without objection, I would like to move the update on the school closure to the first item, as I think that that is of vital interest to the community, as well as we have all of the principals here. So I'm going to thank everybody for being here. I'd like to also once again thank all of the people on the front line in this current situation, the people who are at the checkout cashiers, at the markets, the people on the front lines and the hospitals. And I think we all have learned to appreciate all of those people a great deal more than ever before, and we thank them every day. So I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for the update on the school closures, Dr. Sapphire.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pope. I'd like to just give a run through of some of the many topics that have been covered over the past week, and then backtrack and go back and have our principals and our directors fill in a little bit more of the details. And they, of course, are available to answer questions from the committee as well. So just to give a quick rundown, as you know, last, last week, the memorandum of understanding with the GTA was, we did reach that memorandum of understanding. The, the elementaries, middle and high schools have all established their, their rounds of scheduling. There is some variability between the elementaries where they've established based upon need a certain flexibility within the normal school hours in collaboration with and approval of the principal as to when each teacher will be presenting ELA or math or science, what have you. The middle and high schools have a established a slightly more structured format, but the expectation across the board is that students will experience at least half a day of, of instruction and/or self-directed work and learning. And again, afterwards, I'll invite the principals, perhaps a representative or two from the elementary, the middle and the high school principals, to talk a little bit more elaborately about the nature of those schedules. We have developed a draft memorandum of understanding for our paraprofessionals and are in a position where we can establish a time and date so that the negotiating team of the school committee can meet with the, with GAPE, and we can discuss that particular MOU. I don't think it's appropriate that we discuss it publicly here, because in the past, our conversations with the paraprofessionals have been in closed negotiations, but I'll be sharing that out with the negotiating team ASAP. We continue to provide both breakfast and lunches. We're serving an average of 320, 325 breakfasts and lunches each day. We did come up with a, there is a bit of a scheduling glitch that was brought to my attention courtesy of the mayor and Melissa Texera, and either I or Martha Jo can talk about that in just a little bit. With respect to technology, we have distributed approximately 350 Chromebooks since last week, the first day for grades four through seven, about 125, and about 80 on the two subsequent days as well. We've, the IT department, courtesy of Grant, he has opened up what's referred to as extensions, so that students can access any and all video conferencing. He, of course, has given us some, issued his concerns about what, what students can and cannot do now that those extensions are open, but given the fact that we have no alternative but to provide remote teaching and learning at this point, those extensions have been, are accessible. We've also developed guidelines for conferencing in the way of security. We have taken the information provided by Zoom and various other platforms, and we have established a guideline for conferencing so that teachers going forward know what the safest and most secure way is of, of implementing their programming. We've sent out the disclaimer and the acknowledgement to families, so they know what the expectations are, the responsibilities are, and the extent to which we can and cannot provide confidentiality. And by virtue of the fact that their children are participating, it means that they are providing their consent. With respect to some aspects of special education, counselors, because they're going to be involved in sensitive things such as teletherapy and so on, they are in fact asking for active consent, which is a little bit different for those particular activities. We've been working on the issue of English language learners. Now that schedules have been established at each of the three levels and at all schools, we also have to ensure that our English language learners are receiving the appropriate direct instruction from our EL teachers as well. And so that's going to be taking, that's going to rely a little bit of scheduling. I know that the elementary principals, in particular where the area where the issue is more acute, that Assistant Superintendent Bach and the principals met this afternoon to talk that through. Special education has been exceptionally active mobilizing according to guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and our Director of SED, Patty Wegman, is here again in a little while to give us a full update on the work that's being done. One of the most recent issues that came down from Department of Ed either yesterday or the day before is a requirement to develop individual learning plans for each and every special education student. So more on that. We've discussed the issue of issuing elementary report cards and IEP progress reports in discussing it through with our attorneys. We're now aware that we can email report cards and special education progress reports to parents to their email addresses, and we are not violating any privacy or protection regulations. We've also been advised that anything that's sent out, we should be BCCing to ourselves as well, so that we maintain a record of what was sent. We're working on the issue of new student registration, and Anne Marie Jordan and Christine Castle can talk about the outreach efforts that we are making. We're also looking, in addition to what we currently do, to establishing a PDF that can be filled out online. So in addition to people picking up the paperwork or downloading the paperwork, printing it, and so on and so forth, we're hoping that we can develop a PDF that they can just work on online as well. And we can talk about the, the process of how new student registration will be working. Our teachers, now that they are actively engaged in developing lessons, have been asking to go into buildings, and our principals are setting up those arrivals on, by an appointment basis, small numbers going into each of our buildings, and we are urging them to use all social distancing and universal health precautions. On the agenda for later on is the April vacation issue, and we do have confirmation from the Department of Education that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of vacation week can be used as school days, and also would count towards the 181 days, not 185, because we would use that as vacation days, we can count them towards the total number of school days for children. We've been in touch with the Department of Education regarding the funding behind our efforts with respect to the sustainable improvement plans at both the high school and the middle school. We're aware now that some of the federal funds that we have been offered through grants can be amended because of the nature of the, of the outbreak and the disruption in the work that's being done. If we feel necessary to amend how we're going to use that money, we're free to do so, but the deadline for us coming up with those decisions would be the end of this week. In terms of the principal search for the Plum Cove Elementary School, we have sent out, on school spring, a request for applicants. We've also sent out requests for the search committee applicants. The, the closing for the search committee, people interested, is April the 17th. We will have organizational meetings on April 27th and the 29th, and with the hope and expectation that we will conduct interviews the week of May 4th through the 7th. The posting for the Director of Transportation has gone out as well. We'll probably run that close to about three weeks and, and form a small committee in order to find the next Director of Transportation. Last, I'm sure you noticed that I had sent out some websites for COVID-19 information. We had a conversation of the ad hoc communications subcommittee concerns about our school community having access to the most immediate information. So we sent out links to the Department of Ed, mass.gov, our local health department, and a couple of other sites as well. Something that we'll begin to talk about next week has to do with kindergarten screening and welcoming information, and we're going to be looking into the ways in which we might be able to do those screenings remotely as well. So those are, that's an overview of some of the things that we have been involved in. And if we'd like to back up at this time, and if you would like to hear from some of our principals regarding the faculty meetings they've had this week, the work that now is being implemented, be glad to have them have a turn to provide you with some descriptions.
I believe everybody would like to hear from the principals and the, and the department heads.
Okay. Would they, do we have a representative or two from the elementaries who'd like to start? This is wait time.
I can talk.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy, you want to hear about staff meetings or engagement or what in particular first, I guess?
You can talk a little bit about the nature of the staff meetings, but how that's now translated into, into action and what the teachers are actually doing, please.
So we've been meeting, staff meetings weekly, elementary level is having them on Tuesday mornings. It has been required for GTA members and a lot of GATE members have, and other staff members have been, have joined as well. The participation has been very enthusiastic. People are enjoying getting together and hearing from each other and collaborating. We've been talking a lot about schedules and how to reach students, and we talk in broad terms during the staff meetings, and then we're having common planning times with, with each of the smaller groups. For example, a third grade common planning time where I meet with specialists and so forth. And then we talk more about students that we might be concerned about, that we haven't heard from, that aren't here, you know, are having trouble with technology or getting a Chromebook or whatever, and make sure we're meeting their needs there. We're getting more and more participation as we're going forward. This week, it's only day three of this week, but our participation levels are up, particularly since Dr. Sapphire's letter saying, stating that we're going into phase two, where participation is now required. So teachers are getting their schedules together. They're reaching out to students. I have special educators who have begun services with their caseloads. We are not at full capacity yet, because we are still reaching out to families, but we are gaining ground on that front.
Great, thank you very much. Perhaps one more elementary principal? Talina, you've been involved in our development of the MOU in particular. Would you care to speak a little bit?
All right. So very similar to what Amy has said, we have been meeting every Tuesday at nine, and those meetings have been taking close to an hour and a half, just because people do want to share. They're sharing what's happening in their personal life and their professional life. The common planning times have been where we are really making the inroads into the instructional plan. Many grade levels are working on a common plan together. Many of them are just pooling resources and then making individualized plans to differentiate for the needs of their kids. What we're working on right now is really balancing that collection of information back from parents about what students have completed. That's really posing the challenge. If you're in kindergarten and you've sent, you know, things that kids can do on scrap paper and a notebook or some principles, do we really want every teacher to collect all of those pieces of paper back? It creates a really big back and forth between parent and teacher and feels a little overwhelming. So some of the things we've been discussing is how do we build the system to acknowledge that work is completed without creating that extra paperwork for everybody involved? And so that's really what we're trying to balance right now, along with that access. If they have the Chromebook, can they get to the information? We're training teachers just as quickly as they're rolling out instructions. So sometimes a parent gets frustrated because they click on a link, and the link is still set to anyone with the Gloucester Public Schools link, but they have logged their first grader in on their computer, and so it didn't have the shareable access of anyone with this link. So we're really balancing professional development at the same time as everything else, because this is all so new for everybody.
Going to take a while to iron out some of these things, yes?
Yes.
Great.
To piggyback on what Talina said about professional development, I want to note the professionalism and the dedication of the teachers. This is a crash course on remote learning, and they're learning it at a particularly high rate of speed. And those that are, you know, getting it a little faster than others are reaching out to their colleagues, and they're sharing what's working, and it's been tremendous to see the level of collaboration and professionalism among the staff.
Absolutely. We, we signed an MOU for teachers to work their day, and I can't, I can't name a teacher who isn't going above and beyond that nine to three, just like they always do when kids are in their classroom, they carry work home, but they're waking up and they feel guilty if they are not working while they have their coffee. So it's a lot of manpower right now.
Samantha had a question?
I'm just, I'm wondering if anybody could or wants to speak to just the overall morale of teachers? Just how are people feeling generally? Are they feeling supported? Do they need more? What is your sense?
They're feeling all of those feelings and much, much more. They're feeling a little overwhelmed. It's a huge responsibility to educate students that are not in front of you. It's a huge responsibility to, you know, look out for their welfare when we're not seeing them from day to day. The teachers are tremendously dedicated and looking out for students at every turn. They're also doing, I know at each school are doing things to boost morale. My school, we had a spirit week, then we had a spirit day the following week. This past week, we did a drive-by parade. Teachers were crying, parents were crying, staff, everybody. It was very uplifting. We're doing, we're trying to get engagement through boosting morale, but they're feeling all of those emotions at the same time.
Trying to choke us up, Amy?
Yes. I could show you the video. It's a tearjerker.
Good. Unless there are other questions, we can move to the middle school. Lynn?
Hi, how is everyone? I want to start just by echoing some of the things that Talina and Amy said about their staff. The staff at the middle school has been incredibly responsive, digging in to new things that they've not necessarily used before in technology, trying to be really creative about connecting with kids. We had a staff video that we put together and sent out. We, some of the houses have done their own videos over the course of the last three weeks before we, as we planned to go into quote unquote "real instruction", people were reaching out, holding Zoom meetings with kids, trying to figure out different ways to connect with them. There's been a tremendous amount of effort among house teams and with guidance and with admin to make sure that we've heard from every kid, and we're, we're down to under 20 kids that we haven't connected with yet, and we're, we're taking other steps to reach them, to make sure that we've got every kid connected and, and responding and engaged to what's going on. They also have done a lot of professional development. You know, several of the staff put themselves out as go-to people for the various apps that we're using, like Google Classrooms and, and Screencastify and EdPuzzle and, you know, a variety of other tools that, you know, a few people have used and some are familiar with, but people either, you know, didn't feel their skills were strong enough or wanted to increase them so they can do this really well. They're just, just super dedicated. I can't say enough. We've met a couple of times a week over the last three weeks, typically Monday mornings and then Wednesday afternoons, although we did not meet today because it was the first day in our schedule. And the, you know, the staff and parent, the teachers and paras have been there and support staff as well. And it's, you know, we've tried in terms of morale to do a few things. We had a staff and student compilation video slideshow that's, that's still in process. Right now, we have a staff recipe book going on, also on Google Slides, where people are contributing what they're cooking in the maybe free moments that they have. So a bunch of different kinds of things that to keep us connected, et cetera. In addition to the meetings I've held, people have set up their own meetings frequently as in-house teams with student support staff and their grade level teams. So, you know, a ton of collaboration going on to help this work as, as effectively as it can for kids. Just a side note on that, maybe an example, the April vacation piece, I threw out a quick poll the other day and heard back from 64 people. Only four of them want to keep the vacation week. The others, four others didn't care either way, and the rest of the staff, 87 and a half percent, want to work through vacation. They're excited to get this off the ground. We started our schedule today officially, as we close up term three. So this is a catch-up makeup, still exploring enrichment activities for these three days. And next week, we go full-on into term four with lessons. It's a schedule that has structured blocks so that, you know, kids can be in a certain place at a certain time. A lot of people held Google meets or Zooms with classes today to again, see them by face. Those times are optional, but kids can come and connect with their teacher, with their friends in a different way online. So they, you know, when we're having this, the time blocks assigned is helpful to allow them to do that. The instruction itself is, is mostly into Google Classroom or on Hyperdox, where kids can link into, you know, video from the web or a reading assignment or a screencast video that the teacher prepares of the lesson, and then they can do the tasks, and the teachers are available to answer questions and engage with them. So that is the plan. Like I said, this week is really getting the schedule up and running. I sent a lot of information out to families yesterday, once we got the memorandum of understanding all squared away. And it's a, it's a lot, I think, you know, except for our eighth graders, our sixth and seventh graders have not had Chromebooks at home. So, you know, and families have a lot going on, and I think it's, it's overwhelming for people in general to have this entirely new model. I think Amy or Talina referenced the fact that, you know, where teachers are trying to teach, you know, in ways that can be challenging in the classroom, and to do it online through a lot of text or video, but remotely is, is an added challenge to the process. But everybody's up for it and, and going to try to make it work as well as it absolutely possibly can for the kids. I did get quite a lot of communication from yesterday to early this morning, mid-morning with, you know, kids who couldn't figure out what they needed to do, or, you know, hadn't gotten the right links, or parents who had questions. You know, towards mid-morning, everything settled in. So I think once everybody gets familiar, our schedule is actually much simpler than the one we normally do. We're actually running a normal five-day-a-week schedule with, you know, Monday through Friday being the same all the time. There'll be, you know, two-day ones and two-day twos, and then a Friday flex day with some exploration time and some independent work. So I think getting into that routine, kids won't have to remember whether it's day three, even though it's Tuesday, will be helpful to them. And we're going to continue to do those outreach pieces. The, we did an academic bowl last week virtually. We're going to do some more of those things. Guidance has some plans for additional connection activities as we go. So all of that will continue. And they've, you know, we were trying to, again, take a step into schedule and then start building in, you know, how, to helping kids understand how to participate and how to engage. We are doing a credit, no-credit grading practice from term four. So we want to make sure kids understand what they need to do to earn credit. Again, it's just another different thing that they're going to have, become accustomed to. As with elementary, our, our, our special education staff has begun to put service delivery in place. Our liaisons have an academic support class scheduled every day, so they're, you know, meeting with their kids this week, and the counselors are trying to fit in service delivery among the IEP meetings. It's a lot for them to try and figure out how to do all of this remotely especially. But they're, they're, they're working on it and figuring out the best way to put it all together.
Great, thank you. And unless there are questions, we can move to James in the high school.
Very good. I'll pick it up from there. So I'd like to echo what my colleagues and the other schools have said about our staff. So how I put it in an email that I sent out yesterday to folks is, is just this, you know, overall sense of, let's roll up our sleeves, let's look at the problems, and let's solve problems for kids. So this has to do with, I'm going to talk in two ways. I'm going to talk about the outreach to students and re-engaging students in the required remote learning period, and then also in the academic part of that shift. So, you know, so staff has been tremendous in partnering with outreach efforts to students. So all teachers, counselors, special education liaisons, Sabrina Giordano with our English learners, all, everyone, all hands on deck, our school counselors, adjustment counselors, et cetera, all hands on deck in reaching out to students and pooling that information together. So we know that we are reaching all of our students, that we're using any means we can figure out to get to kids. You know, one student exclaimed to someone who found the student, "How did you find me?" Well, we have our ways. So we, we're able to, you know, find the students and then help address their technology issues, access issues that they may be facing. And so that's a phase that we've really ramped up with help from the IT department. Greg Bach, you know, being at the district office and passing out new Chromebooks to folks on a daily basis, you know, and coordinating. Greg called me from his car the other day because he was looking for somebody's home. So I called the parent, we fixed the address, he dropped off the Chromebook, no-contact delivery, all that kind of thing, from all the staff, from teachers through central administration. And we have work to do still on that front. The other major undertaking has been switching over from the, the, what the remote learning page was, what the remote learning was previously, which was, you know, providing students with access to remote learning, to now building required remote learning. So we've had 672 visitors to our remote learning page, and that's of course in addition to folks who are accessing remote learning directly through teachers and responding to teachers. We have, everyone has, all the teachers have created some form of remote learning, meaning in a very short period of time, teachers have learned how to create Google Classrooms and other ways for students to access learning online. We have a team of teachers who stepped forward to provide professional development in the mornings, in the afternoons, adjusting their schedule to provide professional development to teachers who need support with Google Classroom, with Google Meet, and other specialized tools like PairDeck, and, you know, other things that really increase the engagement for students, so they're, you know, more active in the learning and less passive in this process. Teachers jumped right into figuring out what credits Teachers jumped right into figuring out what credit, you know, how students will earn credit and what that will look like. And so because of that, you know, great work from staff, we were able to put out to parents pretty quickly what, what remote learning, you know, credit would look like as opposed to, you know, the grading system that we have now. Though we're going to still communicate to folks, high expectations beyond credit as a school-wide, you know, approach to figuring out, well, what would credit look like across the board so we can be consistent? And we got that right out to families this week. Today, like Lynn has told you, we also launched our schedule for the first time. A nine to, you know, twelve-half school day as recommended by Desi. And just as an example, I was able to touch base with Jack Porter and the vocational program. And in their first classes, they had about seventy-five percent attendance. So it's pretty good for day one. And he already was writing to me about the outreach to the other students. These kids that didn't, you know, weren't there today and two of them, I actually had some correspondence with either the kid, one of them and a grandmother to, you know, get, get them into the next class with the vocational program. So we're able to already improve beyond that seventy-five percent there. So, you know, I think that covers, you know, a lot of what we've been doing. As Lynn said, you know, and other principals have said, a lot of community response. You know, we're spending a lot of time reaching out to folks, helping them navigate this new situation. And staff members are doing the same thing. Particularly, you know, a lot of the burden, as you've heard, really falls upon our special education staff to maintain those services at this time and they're doing amazing work.
Right. I think Greg has his hand up, but that's a good segue into special education next. Mr. Chair, if I may ask Greg to speak?
Please, please do.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I just wanted to, if I could put in one thing, a lot of people have been working incredibly hard, the teachers have been doing amazing work and the administrators. There's just a, there is a group, and I know we've mentioned the daily work our food service staff have been doing as well. There's a group that we have not mentioned at the last couple of meetings. I just wanted to put out there that our nurses have been working with the public health department on a regular basis. And one of the things keeping us safe in Gloucester is that our nurses are all working as members of the Department of Public Health during this time and they are calling primary contacts, they're calling patients who have been identified with coronavirus and they are doing what's called the primary contact tracking and connections. They're calling every day, multiple times a day, checking temperatures by email, checking in with patients, going over everything, going over protocols. So, you know, one, I just wanted to mention, and one of the things keeping us all safe in Gloucester is the, the daily steady work our nurses are doing to, for, for the city. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. James teed up the, the issue of special education and the mobilization of our special education staff. Patty, would you be gracious enough to make some comments?
Sure. I have a lot to say, but I'll try to keep it brief because there are a couple of things I'd like to get through. I do want to just echo the sentiment to our special education staff, particularly the special education program leaders at each building. They have been my, sort of my message to the rest of the special education liaisons in each building as to how we're rolling out all of the requirements that the Department of Education has asked us to proceed with, along with also providing services to students. So they really are working really hard in sort of fielding a lot of information from myself as well as parent concerns, which leaves me to thanking parents as well. They've been really flexible in our outreach to them. I think we sometimes take for granted that our parents are as equally savvy in technology as, as we are as educators. So our staff have been really reaching out to them and giving them some individual tutorials on how to figure out where is the phone number to call in if I don't want to do a video for Google Hangout and really giving them those options for participating in communication. So I give the parents out there a big shout out because they've been really flexible and understanding that this is really a new platform for learning and these are unprecedented times and that we're all just trying to take one day at a time and understanding this new virtual world that we're in. I just want to remind parents out there that we aren't just doing virtual services for supports. We are providing resources along with virtual supports to provide special education services. All of our mental health counselors out there, our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, speech and language pathologists, our teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing, our teacher of the visually impaired, they're all reaching out to parents this week to schedule services per student's individual education plans. This is on top of the outreach that they've already been doing. So they really are working hard and I have to really commend them for their persistence in outreach to parents. I do appreciate as well the parents, you know, not being afraid to ask for assistance. We've had a number of parents reaching out to us to sort of navigate the number of websites and platforms that we're asking them to navigate. And I appreciate the fact that they're not afraid to reach out to staff to ask for a tutorial or a individual consultation to assist them in navigating the process. In regard to IEP meetings, we've had eighteen IEP meetings on the calendar for this week. I've participated in three of those. The technology seems to be going okay at this point. We've had a couple of glitches with parents, again, trying to figure out the call-in process, but we've, we've worked through those issues. So I appreciate parents that are willing to assist us in using this new platform for participating in IEP meetings during this closure. One of the things that parents can be looking forward to in the next couple of weeks from, from the department, again, working on scheduling services, they will be receiving an individual notice of services from the Department of Special Education, from our Gloucester Special Ed Department, really which is sort of a static schedule of what their individual services will be. We're not, that's not to preclude the fact that we're starting our services, but we need to, as per the Department of Ed, send a notice of services to each parent. And just to sort of end, I want people in the community to really understand that we have a number of high school students that are, that are working a number of hours at some of our grocery stores locally and they're also trying to balance, trying to meet their credit requirements and doing online learning. So I just want, you know, the staff to realize this is a really stressful time for a certain number of kids in our community. And just to, you know, if you see them, pat them on the back and say, "Thank you. You've got a lot on your plate. We'll, we'll do the best we can to support you." I appreciate the fact that a lot of those kids have the capacity to reach out to their teachers in Gloucester to say, "Help me." So I think that that's something that we haven't accounted for is the fact that some of our older students that have the capacity to understand what's happening around us are really stressed out and are looking to the adults in the community to help them. And so I think moving forward, that's just a sentiment that I wanted to pass on to anyone listening.
Thank you. Any questions? Joel?
Just to clarify, there was eighteen meetings on the calendar and that is to say the eighteen meetings all happened or were attempted at least?
So Joel, that was scheduled through Friday. Right now, as I know, because I didn't participate in all of them, obviously, but I know that there was one where we were unable to connect with the parent. The meeting that I participated in, it did take us thirty minutes this afternoon to connect with the parent, but we got through to it, to the parent. So while there, you know, that was eighteen meetings across elementary, middle and high school. And so again, they're plugging away, they're working really hard. And again, I commend the parents for, for helping us work through this during this time.
And it sounded like that was a lot. And so I just was trying to make sure it was eighteen and we were shooting to do all eighteen or whether it was eighteen and that was just too much for one week. I was trying to make sure I understood the context. So that's, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Patty. There's been a flood of advisories and recommendations coming out of the Department of Ed with respect to special education and some of them at times contradictory within a course of a couple of days. So ciphering it all and figuring it all out, you and your staff are to be commended as you navigate, you know, all of the, all of the information that's coming from the state. Thanks again. We also have our responsibilities to our English language learners. And I'd like to ask Christine Castle, if she could speak a little bit to what the state is expecting. And I know that Greg met with our principals today to try to resolve the issue of ensuring that we are providing an ample amount of direct instruction between our EL students and our EL teachers. Christine, if you would?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Taffar. Yes, we have, I've been meeting at least once a week with our EL teachers and we have provided them with all of the guidelines and information regarding our EL learners that we've been getting from the Department of Education. And also, we have worked with our IT department and we have actually sent a direct email to all families that have been, of students that have been identified as LEP. And they've all received the remote learning and all the resources in the three different languages. So it would be English, Spanish and Portuguese, just so that they have that information so that our families can assist our students with any support they can at home if they're having struggles with logging on or any resources that we provided. As far as providing services for our students, our goal is to continue to engage our EL learners. We have a lot of students that are newcomers and with the newcomers, they do struggle with acquiring the language in a larger setting. So that's where we come in with the smaller group settings. So we have spoken to our teachers and they are hoping to get some Google Classroom and some Zoom sessions for those smaller group sessions so they can provide direct instruction for our medianest of our EL learners and also support each of the classroom teachers and all of the different subject, course subject areas.
Richard, I think you're muted.
It's my understanding, thanks Greg, that our high, the high school and O'Malley are holding and have scheduled actual classes. The flexibility within the elementaries has put us in a position where we have to find slots for this to happen. And I know Greg, that you were working with the principals today. How did that go?
Yeah, I met with the elementary principals today and in, in most ways, they were already on it. It was, they have talked with the EL teachers. But the understanding this week, and I figured this might be the issue, is that the, the schedules are still under development, working themselves out this week as things ramp up. And the principals said that they would make their best attempts to, by, you know, by next week to connect with the EL teachers and the teams and to identify those times during the day when that kind of small group and direct instruction can happen. And we discussed that for some students, more instruction is not going to be a bad thing at all, more exposure, more support, and so they'll be working to maximize that time. We're just needed to get a handle on the schedules this week and then they will look through and fill in those, those free spaces. I also want to mention that we do have some provisional placement requirements for newly registering students. And in this case, it's something that Chris Castle is going to be doing from home. All new registrations, every single student who registers has to have a home language survey provided and then interviews based on any responses that trigger those will have to be done over the phone. And so she'll be conducting those hopefully with a little bit of help. It's, it's challenged, but she's certainly up to the task. So we've already talked about the enrollment pathway and adjusting that so that it flows through her first so that she can handle all of those home language interviews. And
And we'll pick up on that in just a little bit as well.
Okay.
But since I queued up Martha Jo, I'd like to turn to food service and meals. And if you could give us a sense of how things are progressing and then we can talk about the necessary shift.
Hi. Yeah. So when we spoke yesterday, I had told you we were doing an average of three twenty-five each day. That's three hundred and twenty-five breakfast and three hundred and twenty-five lunches. We were up to four hundred today. So it is, I was surprised too because the weather wasn't so great. But anyway, we have about thirteen staff that are working. We have, one of the school nurses comes in just prior to their shift and takes the temps before they enter the building or before they head over to, you know, she's working at O'Malley. So the beamen and the vet staff come over to O'Malley, have their temps taken and then go. It's going pretty well. The parents, I think, are finally getting the hang of it and realizing that we're there. You know, it was pretty slow to start off. But as far as making any change, you know, we'll just, rather than working, you know, they've been coming in about eight-thirty to twelve-thirty, we'll do, you know, twelve-thirty to four-thirty. My only concern, my only concern is notifying these parents and making sure they, you know, we get the word out that the times have changed.
Right. Let's explain what, what that means, Martha Jo. As I mentioned earlier, the mayor and Melissa pointed out that if we're establishing scheduled times for kids to be in class and they're supposed to be getting lunches between eleven and twelve, let's say, but they have a class, how's that going to happen? So again, the elementaries have a very flexible schedule and ELA, math, science, different teachers can be at any time. And the middle school and the high school have less flexible, more structured time between nine and twelve. Bottom line is that we're, we're going to shift the distribution of food from two-thirty until four o'clock, which means that a child or a family will show up anywhere between two-thirty and four. They'll get their breakfast and their lunch for the next day. So let's say we begin that on Monday. It's a matter of just getting into the cycle. People will come in Monday afternoon, they'll receive breakfast and lunch for the next day. They'll come Tuesday and get breakfast and lunch for the next day and so on and so forth. So it's just a little bit of a, of a frame shift in terms of the time. But we'll continue to be able to service them. The, the high school and the middle school kids are technically done, you know, by two o'clock. The elementary is by three. So a two-thirty to four should give families ample time to pick up at the, at the same distribution points. We just need to get the information out tomorrow as quickly as possible and repeatedly so that they know that there's a shift probably starting on Monday.
Right. Yeah, it should be, I mean, you know, it should be fine. We just need to make sure they get the word out. And also make sure Kathy Berger has a bus for us at the later time as well.
Right. The mayor has spoken with DPW in terms of access to the building and so on. That will not be a problem. And we may want to either, you know, people who are coming in and receiving the four hundred or so that may come tomorrow, we may need to start notifying them verbally or if somebody can run off
Right.
a handout or something, and I will certainly send something out. a handout or something, and I will certainly send something out more than once, starting tomorrow.
Yeah, we can, we'll start telling them as they hand out the meals that as of Monday,
Right.
it will be a shift in time.
Great, great. Anything else, Martha MJ?
I don't think so. I, you know, the staff's doing a great job. Some of them are, you know,
Can I say something, please? I'm sorry, you can't see my hand. I, we need to also look at how many, if we still get the 400 or if it declines drastically, then what is our next?
Yeah.
move because we don't want children to go with no food at all.
We'll, we'll certainly keep that in mind and see how it goes. No question about it.
And make sure that if you want, and we can work on something in all different languages and all of us can post on social media besides the emails.
Right. No question. I'll, I'll send you what we send out tomorrow. I'll, I'll give it to you in translation as I've done before, so you can put it out on your Facebook.
Thank you.
Yep.
Melissa, have a question?
All right. So did I hear correctly that the lunches weren't being served until 2:30 in the afternoon?
The lunches and the breakfast that they're going to be receiving is for the next day.
So I understand that. This is why I'm asking. So what about Monday? You know what I mean? I, I, I get that it's for the next day, but how early can they get it on Monday?
Well, you know, if, I, I don't know what to say. There's going to be, there's going to be a one meal disconnect, which would be Monday lunch. And you know, I, I don't, you know, I've spoken to Martha Jo about whether or not we can, we can do two shifts. That's probably going to be problematic. Driving buses around is not going to happen. Plus there are all sorts of applications that you have to use to go to the state. You, we're talking about one day where we're not going to be able to provide them with lunch at 12 o'clock and we'll be providing them with two meals for the next day that they can take with them.
I can, I can give them double meals. I can give them a double meal on Monday. They're still not going to get it until two o'clock, but they would, I can give them two breakfast and two lunch meals on Monday. So they have a meal for that day and then one for the next. And then on Tuesday, they'll pick up at between two and four, the meal for Wednesday.
The meals.
Yeah, I'm just worried over the weekend, you know, if they don't get a lot over the weekend on Monday, they're really looking forward to it. So that's very, very helpful, Martha Jo. Thank you.
Good, Martha Jo. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on food service?
Joel? So will they start picking you up on Friday afternoon?
Friday? Between 11 and 12, yes.
Oh, Friday's the, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Right.
Good.
Okay. So I'll let my staff know tomorrow.
Oh, there's a question.
Kathy?
Just, just a quick question. So we're serving out of Veterans and Beeman and also out of the bus, right?
Yes.
And what is the proportion of people that pick up versus go to the locations where they can get it from the bus?
Today, it was fairly even. We did just a little over 100 at Beeman and Veterans. And then we did between Willow Wood and Veterans Way, we did another 200. So it's fairly even. We do have a couple of parents who they drive over each day to the Beeman School and actually pick up meals for some students that live over by the West Parish area. So we're trying to hit all, but.
Thank you.
Just another observation. I talk daily with other mayors, not for nothing, our food service is doing a tremendous job. I have mayors have been considering with the peak not having delivered food. So not as far as, our nurses are doing phenomenal. Actually, other communities and the governor actually is copying what we did. We were ahead of the game because our nurses, the, I'm sorry, the Gloucester Public School nurses decided that, you know what, we're going to put the whole city first. And you have to be very proud, all of us, between your teachers and, and what we're doing and the school committee, city, all of us. I can't even tell you, if you would listen to five or six conferences that I have a day besides a thousand emails, you know, I wish people would actually know when they said, well, what are you doing? And you know what? They have to know what you guys are doing. I, I just wish someone can just follow someone for a day. Because our whole team, all of us, all of you, the food, the nurses, the teachers, everything. What we're doing is, is, it's unbelievable. Cause I talked to Lieutenant Governor, she's going like, so why do they need us? You guys are doing it. Why can't other communities just follow? So I am so proud to, you know, it's easy being a mayor because I've got a team that's, I can't even explain it. It, it's just so overwhelming for mayors to hear all these complaints, but to have my staff say, well, we did it, we've done it, we've done it. Or we've got it, we've got it. And to hear just the 400 kids, I mean, you know what? Thank, I, I mean, I'm getting emotional, but thank you, thank you. Cause I hear the negativities, but you guys are awesome. So from the nurses, the teachers, you know, Sapphire, we joke, Pope and all of that and everything else. Thank you really because we are ahead of the game and hopefully this peak won't hit us. Because we are, we're losing friends. So, you know, keep strong, be safe everyone and keep doing what you're doing. And whatever we can do on the city side, we'll be there.
Thank you. Martha Jo, the nurses are coming and taking the temperature of your food service workers each day?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So they're keeping tabs on that for obvious reasons.
Yes.
It's great. Okay.
I have a question. Are we serving Rockport kids too? Did I read that somewhere?
Yes, any student within any community that has a closure is able to come to our schools.
I was just wondering if the time period has been threw out for them in a different district, that's all.
Um, Rockport can actually start doing their own if they chose to. The restrictions were lifted, but right now we have one family that comes most every day to Veterans to pick up and another that comes over to Beeman to pick up. So it's on, and we were having one family that was coming from Essex. I'm not sure if they still are.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Martha Jo and I spoke about that. We're, we're not going to turn anybody away, but we, we may remind Rockport that they have some responsibility and it might be easier for their families to access food in their own community, but either way is good. Alrighty, new student registration. We've done some considerable work and Greg began to allude to it. Anne Marie, if you're here, and I know you are, if you could talk a little bit about outreach and then we can talk about the ways of registering, including the possibility of an online PDF. And then we can summarize exactly what the process is.
Here we go. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for having me. Yes, so about a week or two ago, after everything started getting settled with preschool and the virtual learning pieces, I really just started focusing and truthfully worrying about how we were going to continue registration overall, but especially for kindergarten. This is really our peak time for registering children for kindergarten. And parents, I have received emails and phone calls and have assured them that they can mail in forms to me and email them to me. However, just getting the word out to the larger general public really was foremost in my mind. So I started out with contacting my, my colleague at Pathways for Children, Amy Larson, who has a great network of contacts in the preschool and early childcare environment in Cape Ann. And she was good enough to send out reminders to all of her contacts to connect with their families regarding kindergarten registration, just reminding people that they can still, even though our offices are closed, that they could still either download forms if they didn't have them from the website, scan and email them or, and, or mail them to us at Two Blackburn Drive. So that messaging has been getting out. There is a, I guess there's a Gloucester Mothers Group Facebook page and it's also been posted on there as well. I've also developed a flyer so that we can post that on the repost on, to the Gloucester Public Schools Facebook page, just to remind people that way as well. We then also, Rich, Greg and Chris and I met this morning virtually to talk about some other things that we could do to help support families. As Rich had mentioned, we, Greg is working on taking our registration form and converting into, converting it possibly into a writable PDF. So the parents don't have to print out forms in case they don't have printing capabilities. We also are going to publicize to people that they can come, come by Two Blackburn Drive in the mornings between nine and, nine AM and noon to drop off packets. And we can also make hard copies available to them as well. But really trying to spread that word so that we can get the information in as soon as we can. So that we by early summer have a good sense of what our numbers are for next year. Any questions?
Greg, did you get a chance to work on that usable PDF form or what would it look like?
Yeah, I'm actually was working on it just before and periodically even during the meeting. No, just, there was one tough thing that I just couldn't let go and I wanted to figure it out. And I got it figured out. So we're good. I will keep working on it tonight and I'm hoping to be able to give you a, not only an editable PDF, but one that will hopefully directly export fields right into the kinds of fields we don't want in case we want to collect any data from it. So that's working out pretty well. They, I just want to clarify on the drop off. Though I'm there, it's easier if we do, try to do things between 10 and 12 just so I can get in some Zoom meetings without interruption. So if we, we can try to have Chromebook pickups and packet drop offs always between 10 and 12, that would be ideal.
I apologize, I must misspoke. 10 between 10 AM and 12, absolutely. I also think that just as, as Greg was speaking, I just, I also think it's important for us to recognize that for some families, it's more difficult to kind of put all, not just fill out the forms, but get all of their information together. So if I can also make sure that people know that whether it's via email or by phone and just promoting that people can still call my, the phone, my phone number and that I will get back to them within a day or two. I think that's really important because I think for some families, the whole registration process can be a little bit overwhelming. So.
Good, thanks. So in terms of the process, if we have the online PDF form that can be filled out or it can be dropped off, once we have the information, it's scanned and then it's sent to Christine Castle. And as Greg mentioned earlier, one of her main tasks, receiving the documentation has to do with a home language survey and it, and a checking in. And she will then be in touch with families with translators when and where necessary in order to work through the process so that there's a clear of an understanding of what is required in terms of documentation. Once we have all of the materials, it's then sent to Maria Pugliesi. And she is the person responsible for the data entry and the recording. And once that's all complete and she's entered into the data, she then sends it to the principals who in turn will make their contacts during kindergarten screening, kindergarten orientation and all of the other appointments that we have. One issue that did come up has to do with medical forms. And I don't remember who in the meeting pointed this out, but given the postponements of physicals and the like, it may be difficult now until the summertime for families to get the necessary medical and dental documentation that's required. And we're just going to live with that. Normally we would wait for it before we sent it to the principals, but under these circumstances, we'll probably send it along. And hopefully with the summer months, we can then track that stuff down and try to get that completed as quickly as possible for the start of school. So we don't want to hold up getting our list together and working with the school choice and everything else, knowing that there's going to be a delay with respect to the medical documentation that, when it comes in. And I think that takes care of the more elaborate aspects of our school closure update. And unless there are any further questions, that brings that to a close.
Any questions? Okay. Then we're going to move on to the budget, public hearing, which is the main reason of having this meeting tonight. I would just, before we start, I would just remind everybody that this is a budget that we passed about a month ago. And as we all know, the world has changed greatly in that past month. And so just keep in mind that this reflects our thinking a month ago. So I will turn it over to, back to Superintendent Sapphire and I assume you'll be joined by CFO Gary Frisch. And it's all yours.
Okay, thank you. Can you folks see that on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Good. Alrighty, folks. Once again, the budget calendar, as everyone is pretty much familiar with, the budget process actually begins in the summer and the previous spring, but we begin to coalesce all the information in November through December, when the principals and department directors submit their budget proposals. Throughout the month of January into February, the CFO Gary Frisch and I are meeting with principals and department directors going line item by line item and talking through the, the draft budgets for the schools and the departments, also looking at their additional requests and needs, et cetera. BNF, Building and Finance Subcommittee simultaneously is holding those meetings as well. And then on February the 26th, the first draft of the FY21 budget was presented to the school committee. We're here on April the 8th for the public hearing. The school committee will be holding its final vote sometime between now and early May and then submitting the budget to the mayor sometime in the early part of May as well. As I'm sure she will be drafting her citywide budget to the city council. I believe that right now, our presentation to the city's Budget and Finance Subcommittee is scheduled for May the 28th is what I believe the date to be, and I'll confirm that. City council will be voting the entire total appropriation on or about June the 11th. And school committee then will have its final vote on June the 24th. Going into some of the district initiatives, obviously the budget is there to provide the necessary support so that our, our educational program in all its aspects can move forward. And one of the overriding overarching aspects to our district initiatives has to do with sustainable improvement at both the high school and middle school. As you know, the high school is in its first year of its implementation of its Sustainable Improvement Plan and the middle school is in the process of developing it. By the end of this year, I had spoken with some folks from the statewide system of supports. Some of the timelines will be delayed into August because of the school closure in terms of the full complete development of the Sustainable Improvement Plan for the middle school. Much of the, much of the aspects of the budget are then dedicated to providing the necessary supports for both of these schools as well as some other important aspects as well. So you'll be hearing about, again, for the school committee, some of the additional requests to the budget which involve staffing for social, emotional learning and behavioral support, coordination of special education, particularly at the high school level, expanding our English language learner services, literacy coordinating, coordination through a literacy coordinator for both the elementaries and the middle school and making the transition and the connection between fifth grade and sixth grade as seamless as possible. Reading support along with academic support and intervention. One of the things that we have been working on quite diligently over the last few years is creating a response to intervention system at the elementaries. A lot of what you're seeing here and what we'll be describing has to do A lot of what you're seeing here and what we'll be describing has to do with how do we move those kinds of supports and interventions into the middle and high school. And there are also some requests, particularly for elementary math coaching as well, to provide more services and more coordination in math at all of our elementary schools. In terms of our district initiatives, this notion about increased student engagement, everybody's in favor of increased student engagement, but the point here is that the Sustainable Improvement Plans, the one completed at the high school, the one in development, are all designed for that particular purpose. Instructional focus, providing the necessary remediation in the form of interventions for students, and increasing student engagement in terms of the the excitement of the curriculum that we provide and the support that we provide so that every kid can get it within a reasonable period of time. At the elementary is working with a number of professionals and experts in the field. We're looking to build more teacher capacity in the areas of making our dependent learners more independent in terms of how they approach their learning, creating an even more increased sense of belonging for our kids through more of a cultural awareness. And we've talked about cultural proficiency and and Zaretta Hammond's work, et cetera, in the past, and the extent to which we can build competence in our kids and relevancy so that they see the relevance of the curriculum that they're working on day to day and how it how it impacts their lives. Chronic absenteeism, we spoke about this both with the District Improvement Plan as well as with the three-year strategic plan that was approved and has been submitted to the Department of Ed. How do we identify the underlying issues? How do we take all of the information that we have, academic, behavioral, attendance-wise, and put it all in one identification and intervention system so that we can see on both an individual level and in terms of our subgroups, exactly what we think is going on and how how that can be attended to? And a big part of the chronic absenteeism has to do with establishing and sustaining both parent and community partnerships so that we are building the understanding and the expectation that if you're not in class, we can't teach you. And it's just a very important thing that this is an entire village community kind of responsibility, and we need to devise and design ways for getting that message out. Some a summary of some of the other things in our District Improvement Plan is the aforementioned increase in the tiered system of supports, bringing it up from the elementaries to the middle school and the high school, different kinds of schedules as we saw with the school closure piece, but the same kinds of academic needs are there as well. The District Improvement Plan is something that carries over from year to year, plus we add or subtract things depending upon need. One of the things that is a constant, of course, is our approach to the MCAS. Teaching and learning is one thing, but we're also held accountable for measuring student achievement through the MCAS and through the goals. So the extent to which our system of MCAS preparation aligns with what we want to teach, how we want to teach it, what the standards call for, and then ultimately, our students demonstrating that they're getting it on the statewide assessment is something that we continue to pursue. I've referred already to the to the teaching of cognitively complex skills, rightly tied into increasing student engagement, the process of inquiry, higher order thinking skills, all of these, you know, the logistics of all of these are being worked out at the various levels. And the state standard term for that is Preparation for College and Career Readiness. We seek to maintain and improve upon a technology-rich environment. And Grant Harris, who I believe is in attendance, has provided us with goals that he and his department have for ensuring that our our technology environment remains as sound as it is. Many of the access points that connect each and every classroom to the system ultimately are in need of replacement. And there are a host of other things with lots of alphabet soup kinds of abbreviations that I couldn't possibly know about, but hear of are things that these guys are going to be working on to make sure that we can get the work done. And yes, we're in the the early stages of this remote learning, and there are concerns and glitches and this and that. But generally speaking, here's an entirely new way of instructional delivery. And our system at large, it's happening and it's maintaining and it's sustaining what needs to be done at a at a district level. So my I commend Grant and his team for really jumping on this and making sure that everything can work as smoothly as it as it already is. Meeting the needs of English language learner students, we heard about that earlier on through Christine and Greg. I've already mentioned the local early warning intervention system and taking all the data and putting it in one place. The self-evaluation data about equity and achievement is a carryover from an earlier coordinated program review, but we need to know which children are taking which courses at what levels and and the extent to which there is equity across the district, both in terms of the academics, in terms of discipline, and all the rest. Communications and public relations, we articulated a lot of the things that we are doing district-wide, including the most recent positive happenings that have been going out. And I mentioned earlier that the ad hoc communications subcommittee is now looking to establish a school committee Facebook page as well. Last, there is the the maintenance ongoing review of our safety procedures and protocols at the district level through each crisis management team. In conjunction with the police department in particular, we'll maintain the same appointments for our simulations and drills going next year and all the like, and just make sure that that, in fact, is taking place at the well, I don't know that I should comment on that, so I'm going to move on from safety. Some of our guiding principles for budget development have to do with the collaborative effort in developing this budget between the school committee, school and district leadership, school leadership working with its staff and with the site-based councils. Next is the responsible use of taxpayer funds to support student achievement, as well as their social, emotional health and well-being. And then targeted funding to provide additional supports to our challenged students and subgroups. Those are three fundamental guiding principles that under grid, undergird, rather, our our budget. Going more directly toward the budget, then, we've seen these slides year in and year out. These are the annual changes to the budget, the cost of living adjustments and what it takes to create a level service budget, increases in health insurance, step increases of teachers, for example, moving from step five to six, lane changes where staff go from a master to a masters plus 30, et cetera, the new positions which we'll be talking about, addressing the needs of our English language learners due to increase in enrollment, we have a chart for that, and the special education out of district tuitions, which is always a fluid issue. We have spoken about some of the increases that took place just a month or two ago, and we'll talk more specifically about the impact of the budget with that as well. I can't see anyone, so if there is a question, somebody will need to let me know. This is just a roundabout of the funding sources. As you can see, close to 85% of our budget comes from the city. And our Chapter 70 funding is about 15% of the overall budget. That 6.9 does include the increase due to the legislation, the Student Opportunity Act, which passed, I believe, in January, and that in will increase our Chapter 70 funding by $229,000. Some of the percentage of expense categories are ordinary categories, of course, all the materials, textbooks, furniture, stuff that is part of the budget. 15% of our budget has to do with benefits. Gary, if you could just sort of quickly summarize what those benefits include?
Yes. The benefits include health insurance. Let's see, unemployment insurance, workers' comp insurance, unpaid or paid sick leave, and then vacation payouts as well. So all that is part of the benefits.
Great, thank you. And 71% of the entire budget goes towards salaries. This is a a look at the increase or the assumptions behind the increase for next year. We are, in fact, seeking a budget increase of $1.6 million. We're working on the working assumption that the city will provide us with $1.4 million plus the 229 from the Student Opportunity Act, bringing our 21 budget, $1.6 million above the FY20. If you recall, when we first presented the budget, our assumption was to work from a 1.2 million to the 229,000, but subsequent review by the school committee deemed it appropriate that we would add some of the what we feel to be necessary positions in what you'll recall, it has to do with option C, and we'll be going through those. But again, to repeat, we are hoping for a $1.6 million funding increase for our FY21 budget. Excuse me. Some of the significant cost adjustments with some figures, the GTA salary base and step increases, just about $900,000. GTA retirements help to lower some of the increase by 249,000. Our health insurance is currently at 8% at 472,641. Gary, you want to talk just a little bit about how we came up with the 8%?
Sure, I'd be happy to. The health insurance increase came out to a little bit over 5%, but adding new positions that are will come to in a slide coming up, added some additional costs as well. So it's really a combination of the health insurance increase as well as new positions that are potentially added.
Thank you. Our additional requests at this time are $814,000. Our added district tuitions, we are expecting that there would be a bit of a decrease. So the adding and the subtracting brings us to the $1.6 million increase over FY20, our current budget. So the FY20 budget, you see the figures here, it's at $43.1 million. The draft FY21 budget total is at 44.7. Once again, you see the proposed increase of 1.6, and the percent increase right now is at 3.83%. The the school department is the only department across the city that has the health insurance included in its budget, unlike any other department. So if we were to if the if the health insurance were on the city side in the same way that police, fire, and all the other departments have their health insurance on the city side, our actual FY20 budget would be 37.3 million. Our FY21 budget would be 38.6. The proposed increase, rather than being 1.6 million, would be 1.1, let's say, almost 1.2, and the percent increase, rather than being 3.83, would be 3.19. Some history regarding the city's contribution to the school budget, the five-year average has been 2.52%. In FY20, we received 2.86. The 3.83 is significantly higher, but we also need to take into account that the Chapter 70 funding of the $229,000 is represents monies that we had not anticipated. And based upon our need, that is the basis for part of the basis for our additional requests. So I I do believe that the Student Opportunity Act funding should be taken to account and understood as to why the 3.8% is as high as it is relative to what we have seen in the past. Just some expenditures by school per pupil. You can see that our largest per pupil spending is at veterans. Of course, veterans is where we have institutionalized our co-teaching. The number of staff, the staff to student ratio, these are all factors with respect to the expenditures by school per pupil. This is based upon FY18 figures and the Department of Education. Those are the latest figures that the department provides for us. The middle school is is low man on the totem pole, based upon need and in recognition of where they are currently situated. You'll see that a number of the staffing requests are coming from the middle school as we enter into that part of the presentation. So we initially had broken down the additional requests into options A, B, and C. This particular budget incorporates A and B and three positions in option C as well, beginning with the and and by the way, as you know, the principals are here. So if people need to hear more about these positions than what I'm saying, I'll be glad to yield to the principals so they have an opportunity to explain as well. Gloucester High School has almost 800 kids. They've got the PACE program, which is the in-school suspension program. They've got the BRIDGE program, which is the at-risk dropout prevention program, and a host of other children that are in need of some some contact and communication through adjustment councils. Right now, we only have one adjustment counselor at the high school. Between the size, the number, and those aforementioned programs, the request is for an adjustment counselor at GHS. There is also an increased felt need for more coordination of the special education program at Gloucester High School. And what that would mean is a position would become an administrative position. And in order to make that happen, it would cost an increase to the overall budget of $12,000. At the same time, there are other distinctive duties that the current program leader position does with some modifications. We would maintain the sped program leader stipended position in addition to the administrative coordinator position. And so that would cost us $6,000 for that to happen. Also, because of the increased numbers, and I'll show you a chart shortly with our ELL students, we do have a staff member who who both works with students directly and also helps to coordinate the ELL program at the high school. There's a need to add more hours to that position because, quite frankly, more work is required. That would also call for a $5,000 increase to the budget. Moving to the middle school, as the high school did last year, O'Malley would like to create an in-school suspension program with wraparound social services, putting children out, especially, you know, 12, 13, 14-year-olds out of school suspension, possibly with a parent not being home during the day, really isn't constructive. So if we could bring an in-school suspension person working in conjunction with the psychologists and the guidance counselors and the adjustment counselors and everybody else there, we think that would be a heck of a lot more constructive in terms of helping to promote positive student behavior. O'Malley is one of the schools that does need to provide increased service for ELL kids, so they are asking for an education support professional. Next, well, let me go down one more. There's also a need for an O'Malley reading specialist, and this is a net effect to the budget because of two things, one of which I remember, which has to do with if we have the reading specialist, we don't need contracted services. And I believe there's one or two tutoring positions, Gary, as well?
That is correct.
Okay, so I guess I did remember. Okay, thank you, good. And last on this page, there's a call for actually two elementary math coaches. Right now, three of our schools have a math coach, 0.3 full-time equivalent. Two of our schools have 0.5. And based upon the size of the schools and with an increase of one or possibly two math coaches, we would really like to increase the amount of time math coaches can spend in buildings, collecting information, modeling, working with our teachers, and trying to really hone our product in the in the classroom in math. and trying to really hone our product in the, in the classroom in math. The total cost for option A is $297,000. Moving into option B, this includes, well, the total include is 590, it includes both options A and B. Gloucester High School is asking for an English teacher. I had spoken earlier about trying to find more academic support for students and intervening on their behalf. I believe that this English teaching position, excuse me, is designated for that role. O'Malley is looking for two interventionists, one in math, one in literacy, for the same purpose. Beaman is asking for an ELL teacher. Again, our, the three schools that have the most ELL students, I believe, are veterans, Beaman, and the high school. And then, ELL coordination, I had mentioned this before, this would literally be an administrative ELL coordinator, ELA coordinator position, working both K-5 and 6 through 8, helping bring across the intervention systems at the middle school, working with our middle school teachers, and connecting with our elementary teachers as well, particularly for what I had mentioned earlier, which is the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade. So total of the options for A and B to the budget are $590,000. In addition, the school committee has voted to also request an elementary adjustment counselor. I believe that's a Beaman, Gary? Did I lose you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was muted. The elementary adjustment counselor is half-time at Beaman, but it's, you can't hire a half-time person, so we needed to add a full-time position.
Right. And based upon need, I'm sure we would find a place or two for that particular counselor. O'Malley is asking for specialists. We can think of specialists as electives. One, this would provide more options for our students to take, but also it would really help the schedule in terms of rounding out the schedule, but also taking some of the burden off of the other specials, electives, because the numbers in those electives, those specials, are particularly high. And then the, the last in option C is the elementary math coach position. This is the second request, which if both were to pass, then I think we would have one, two, four, five schools, is that right? No? Yeah, four for five schools.
Four for five schools.
It would almost be full-time in every building, very close to. Total of, for the options A, B, plus C is $814,000. This is a summary. What you've seen in the last three or so slides is here. This slide represents the options that are in this draft budget. And of course, depending upon ultimately what the figure is coming from the city, that will determine what moves we may or may not have to make, so that the order of the positions in A, B, and C remain an ongoing subject of review. Potential city funding. So as you can see from the chart here, we've added the 3.83% and the 1.6 million. If we only went with option A, then we'd be receiving $517,000 above what's needed. Options A and B to 24, but the 1.6 is designed to provide a, a budget that is consistent with our requests, so that we would be in a position to stand pat and add the additional requests that are on the table. We initially, last time, had presented a 3.31% increase at $1.4 million. And option B is the landing place where with a 3.31% increase, depending on what the city chooses to do, we would be able to exercise adding both options A and B, but we would run a deficit if we were to add option C. And if, if, if push came to shove, we'd have to find those, that $224,000 somewhere else. Added district tuition information. The numbers have varied over the course of the fiscal years from 57 to 68 students, depending upon the annual ongoing increase in cost. That doesn't mean that added district tuitions get any less expensive. We are anticipating around 57 placements next year at a $4.4 million ticket. That is always subject to change, witness what we experienced about a month and a half ago, where we had close to as many eight prospective students who might have been eligible for added district placement. The way that has shaken down at this point is that we have four new placements, two more pending acceptance from receiving schools, and school closure has put a delay in that. So the, the cost of these added district placements to the FY '21 budget is $340,000. We do, as, as we have historically in the past, we do have a placeholder, because if there's anything that we can expect throughout the course of the school years, that we're going to have added district tuition responsibilities that we had not initially known about and, or were in a position to specifically plan for at the beginning of the fiscal year. So here's the chart. Our district data manager looked at the, at the slope of the line from FY '17 to FY '20, and the numbers, or the math anyways, speaks to the fact that we could see as many as 224 English language learners here in the district in FY '21. So we already have 199, and somewhere between 199 and 224 next year. It's a, a big responsibility, and a number of our additional requests are designed to meet the needs of those students. Health insurance costs, Gary spoke a little bit about this last time, but here we see some historical data, beginning with FY '17, where the increase was 9.1%. Last year, it was 8.6. Right now, we are anticipating 8.03, and I believe this number does include the additional new requests, Gary?
Yes, that does include A, B, and C, health insurance benefits for approximately 13 new staff members.
Right, thank you. Just a, just a rundown on some of the federal and state grant adjustments. This is FY '19 and the current year FY '20. We can see there was a bit of a dip in Title I. I'm sure I mentioned last time that our low-income percentages have gone up. So Title I being predicated on the percentages for low-income in a district, we can anticipate that that figure is going to up, go up in terms of what we will be receiving in Title I. Title II has taken a bit of a dip. Greg, do you have any sense of what we can anticipate with Title II next year?
No, I'm afraid to have no information about next year.
And just a very thumbnail sketch of what Title II is used for?
Most of our Title II funds go to providing professional development for teachers and professionals. It also supports curriculum development. Supports some of our math and ELA and science teams, so it, it supports teacher leadership committees and professional development.
Thank you, sir. Our early childhood helps to support the preschool. Perkins is monies that go to our vocational program. The major special education grant, Grant 240, you can see in FY '20, we did receive an increase. Patty, you don't expect this to go down at all, do you, next year?
Rich, I really don't have any information to say either way.
Yeah, okay, and we'll probably have to wait until June anyways, right?
Sure, absolutely.
Yep. Title III is holding steady, as is Title IV for academic enrichment. Circuit breaker funds, what we anticipate, this is checking account versus savings account. Well, we anticipate spending in FY '21 is $896,961, and we hope going into FY '22 that there will be a cushion of $250,000 plus, based on this year's numbers, circuit breaker will provide us with, you know, the increased funding for FY '22 as well. Anything you need to add, Gary?
Yes, this $1.1 million is conservative. We have a base that calculation on a 70% reimbursement rate. We've heard through, anecdotally, through the associate commissioner, that it's going to be a reimbursement rate this year of .75. So if that is the case, then we can expect a little bit more funds for our circuit breaker.
Okay, sounds good, let's hope so, huh? Capital improvement requests. Gary?
Yes, I'd be happy to talk about this. So on the left side is some of your larger dollar cost items. Start, starting with the preschool, currently, we lease, or the city leases the building that we're in to make a permanent home. The purchase cost is $4 million. So that's a number out there, and that will be coming to very, within next year or two to make a decision. The, I think Dr. Sapphire talked a little bit about this IT wireless system and the need to enhance the infrastructure, especially for the wireless system. We talked with Grant, and he said the estimated cost is $325,000. Now, we do believe we have separate funding to, in conjunction with the city, to pay for those costs, so it wouldn't be coming directly out of the general fund. As you know, the EGS Veterans Project initial hit, initially had a price tag of $69 million. That cost is being analyzed as, as they move into the schematic design phase, and they'll be putting some more fine-tuned costing of the project. So wait to see those numbers shortly.
Gary, can I just interject, because there may be some folks in the public listening? The, there's a certain percentage reimbursement rate for the project from the state. The Gloucesters percentage rate is somewhere in the mid to high 50% reimbursement, but that is not actually what the reimbursement rate is, because reimbursement rate only applies to that which is reimbursable. So if you, in, in real terms, what it means is that ultimately 38 to 40% of the entire project will probably be reimbursed, which means that that 69.1 million figure actually will probably somewhere in the 40s, 40 to 45, 46 million is what the actual cost is going to be to the city when all is said and done. And that's, those are all approximate figures, but on average, when you boil it all down, the actual full reimbursement rate for the project is somewhere around 38 to 40%. Thanks.
Okay, thank you for that. Moving on to the next project, the district-wide security, those are enhanced security remodeling projects at the middle school and the high school for the front entryway. We're working with the architect to redesign that, so improves the security and safety for, for all staff and all students. As new, as people enter the building, there'll be another vestibule to be buzzed in. So we're looking forward to that. That won't happen this year, but looking forward to succeeding years, possibly next year, summer of FY '21. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Dr. Sapphire?
No, it's just that people, if people can imagine what the double-entry system looks like at West Parish, people are buzzed in, as you said, into a vestibule, and then there's a recognition piece, and then they're buzzed in a second time. That is what modern district school security entranceways are, are about, and I'm thankful that the city has put this on the slate, and hopefully by, by the summer of 2021, the security measures will be in place for both the middle school and the high school.
Okay, on the right side is some of our smaller projects, and those have been submitted by the building principals. Over at Beaman School, there's a, there's a need to replace the front, and, front asphalt in front of the building. At Plum Cove, there's a need to replace some of the playground equipment and add a fence for safety and security of the students playing there. District-wide, most of the schools need additional curtains, shades for security reasons, and, and to improve the sun glare that's coming into the building. Also, a gym floor replacement, possibly at Plum Cove, and then resurfacing the wood floor at West Parish. So those are some of the summer projects, and we're looking for DPW, the fund, hopefully starting this summer.
Thank you, Gary. Already, not every salary is funded in the operating budget. The two, the two candidates, of course, the suspects are revolving fund and grants. Here, you see a brief listing of the salaries that will be taken from our various revolving funds, both the revolving funds and the grants. Each salaries are somewhere in the neighborhood of $1.1 million. You can see here athletic school choice, what the funds are and where they, where they are taken from. And the same is true with salaries funded by grants. Here are the, the various grants that are associated with that. And again, in FY '21, you can see that we'll be using approximately $1.1 million from each of these particular grants. Student to teacher ratio, these are some comparison with our DART districts. DART is a Department of Ed measurement. It's designed to examine similar kinds of communities based upon demographics, socioeconomic circumstances, and a host of, you know, social and economic factors. So you can see here, in terms of our student to teacher ratio, we're, and the, the range is, is really, you know, pretty close for the first seven of the 11 districts, of 11, 11.0 to 11.7, and you can see that we're in fifth out of 11 with respect to having the lowest student teacher ratio. This does not just refer to classroom teachers, but, you know, every, every staff member, guidance counselor, psychologist, adjustment counselors, you name it across the board. And so that's how they come up with these particular numbers. And another comparison with DART has to do with the operating expenses per pupil, and FY '18 is the latest information that the Department of Ed provides us with, and that we are sort of smack dab right in the middle in comparison with the districts, the, the fellow districts in our cohort, if you will. And I think that's it. So I'm going to stop the share, and I think we have a public hearing.
Yes, we're, we're going to move into a public hearing. I know we have, the school committee has received this presentation essentially before. We will also have an opportunity to ask questions when we vote on it. So I'm going to move directly to the public hearing. So for the attending... So for the attendees, and we have at the moment 19 people watching or listening in. The, the process will be if you're on a computer, there should be a capacity for you to raise your hand. If there's, if you're phoning in, and we have two people that are phoning in, and you want to speak, you've got to press star nine, at which point I'll get an indication that you'd like to speak and I will, I will recognize people in the order that they sign up to speak. The, the public hearing, because you will be required to state your name and address for the record before you make your statement. And we'll, would like to hold it to about three minutes for you to speak. And we also need to restrict it to talking about the budget. The, I've been in discussions with the superintendent about somehow next week having the capacity to let people call in or speak and ask questions about school closures. But we will, we will, that's to be announced whether we'll do that with a, within the framework of a school committee meeting or whether he'll do it as a, as a, just an administrative program is yet to be determined, but we will try to do something where people can call in and talk about school closures or ask questions about school closures next, next week. So with that said, I'm going to open the public hearing. And if you'd like to speak, once again, state your name and address because all I can, for all I see perhaps is your first name or your phone number or your, perhaps whatever your email term is. So we have someone named Cynthia and I'm going to allow you to speak. You can now, Cynthia, you have your hand up, you can speak.
Okay, you guys can hear me all?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Cynthia Mahouski at 13 Wall Street in Gloucester, Massachusetts. I am also a teacher at the high school and thank you for having this, these Zoom chats. This is great. I just wanted to comment and I know that, acknowledge that you said, you said this a month ago. My concern being about the, that we definitely need another English teacher at the high school and we also need this, the, another adjustment counselor. I was curious and surprised to see another administration, administrative position put in. I recognize that's for special ed, but we had cut out an administrator three years ago. Maria Leison was the vice principal at the high school and to cut back on things. And so I'm not understanding why we wouldn't just utilize our money more for direct services to kids, especially now with this time, how awful and stressful it's been with kids' social emotional needs. And especially when they come back to the school year, whether it's going to be in May or September, these are going to be long-term repercussions. Kids are going to need a lot more emotional support and direct services with counseling, adjustment counselors, direct support with teachers and all of that. I was very happy to see the ELL position. Serena Giordano over at the high school is amazing and awesome and she definitely deserves more hours and definitely deserves to be paid more. So those are my concerns, especially considering the last month with just how hard and stressful it's been. I mean, most of my conversations with, with a lot of students have been, you know, they're, they're working really hard. They're as, I think it was Hattie Wegman who talked about the older students who are working full-time at the grocery stores. And I've had students who like literally asked, like have their cell phone, ask their boss if they can just run outside to jump into like the update or the Zoom chat or have contacted me about, I'm the only worker right now. Can I get this done some other time? Kids are super stressed out that MCAS are still going to happen, which I cannot believe that they would. That's absolutely ridiculous. And so there's a lot of just worry about like working all the time, keeping up with schoolwork when it's remote, multiple people being in the house and not always having access to devices, having to care for younger siblings because the parents are trying to get work wherever they can. Just the fact that we had, you heard about Martha Jo Fleming, which is, she's amazing and how many students are utilizing to get the, to get lunches and food for the home. I mean, you can imagine with that kind of financial stress, what it's like for parents to, and families, they're going to need more direct services. We don't actually need another administrator at the high school. So that was my biggest concern. I'm glad to see that everybody is staying healthy and well and safe. That's definitely the most important thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? We have Cheryl. Go ahead.
Hi, Cheryl Olson, Essex Ave, Gloucester. Um, I noticed on the capital, you're hearing me, right?
Yes.
I noticed on the capital improvement that you had $4 million established for the preschool. I am assuming that is the time when the lease is up on the current building. If you're spending, you know, $40 million to do a combined East Gloucester Ward two school, is the $4 million going to be enough for a new preschool?
I can answer that if you'd like. The, the lease that was signed when we leased it has a fixed price in it for us to buy it. So yes, it is enough.
Oh, so you'd be remaining in the
Correct.
In the building you're in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing.
Jonathan, there is one other guest that has their hand up at this time.
How come I don't see, I see Cheryl who just spoke. Is there somebody, I, Grant, I don't, I don't see somebody else.
Looks like they're still there. No, I can't unmute them, so.
Well, if you, if you'd like to speak, I just punched lower all hands and I will ask you to raise your hand again. I apologize if somebody's wanting to speak. Cynthia, you, you already spoke. Is your hand up again?
Yes, it is. I was just going to say maybe enable the chat function for the person who can't speak. They could type in and at least it will be part of the public record.
Okay, if you're having difficulty with your device, which, whatever you're using to reach us, the chat function, as far as I can tell, is open.
It's open now.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm still not seeing anybody indicating that they'd like to communicate to us. That being said, once again, I'm going to close the public hearing as I don't see any additional people looking to speak. So thank you very much for the comments that we have gotten. I, as I said before, this budget was passed for public hearing almost a month ago. And in a, in a, in the past month, are, a lot of things have changed for all of us and we're not required to have submit a budget to the city until May. So although it's on the agenda to vote this tonight, I would like to make a motion that we, that we table it at least until our next meeting as I believe I, the superintendent and I have had some conversations with Mr. Distino and Mr. Dunn. And the way, I guess they could explain it is that there are a lot of things that we don't know, they don't know regarding income. The city gets property tax and it gets excise taxes as two sources of income, which are relatively fixed and should not be affected by, by the, the current coronavirus situation. But they do get a substantial amount of money from beach revenue. I think it's in the nature of about $2 million a year that goes into the budget as well as money from hotel and meals taxes. And those are quite up in the air right now. That being said, and we don't know this either, but the state receives a great deal of their income from sales tax and income tax. And certainly those things are going to be affected for the upcoming year. So my suggestion would be that we table any vote on the budget until we have more information. Joel?
So none of what you just said indicates that we as a department will need less. And so the idea is to present the city with what the department needs to function next year and provide the services that have been requested of the department, regardless of what the revenue situation might be on a city or statewide level, that's not on us to, it doesn't give me no need, what we need next year. It's up to the administration to decide how much they're willing to allocate toward us and we can tackle that when it comes back. But as far as, you know, us presenting to the city, what the school department needs in order to provide the services that are expected of the school department, you know, that doesn't seem to, that's unlikely to change in the next two weeks based on what you said.
That's, that's a valid point, Joel. I still think that there is working with the city is, has its value and as they are able to provide more information to us, maybe we can come to some better understanding of, of what we may get in the end. Melissa?
I am mute now. I just want to say I agree with the idea of putting it off and seeing what happens. While I do agree with Joel that it is, our budget is what it is and dictated by the needs of the district. I recall a time in 2008 when the market crashed and I was on the committee then and I don't know if anybody else on the board was, but it was clear that we had to work with the city to figure out how we as a city as a whole move forward and, and work within those boundaries and guidelines of having less income or potential NPD cuts and things like that. So while I do believe our needs are our needs, a lot can happen in two weeks. I think our data has probably changed a little bit since we voted this budget and it could change a little bit in the next few weeks as far as special ed needs and things like that. So because it's not imperative to vote it tonight, I'm okay putting it off to another meeting. And another reason why too is my experience with Zoom, having it open to the public. While we might think tonight that everybody had a chance to speak, we often find out after the meeting that someone's technology wasn't working correctly and wanted to speak. So I'm a little concerned about that, knowing we have so many attendees on watching, but yet no one willing to talk. So to me, there's a lot going on and I don't see it necessary to vote tonight. But if push comes to shove, I'm ready to vote, but I think we can wait two weeks and just see what goes on. A lot of communities are in crisis right now and I think we just need to adapt to that and see what happens and work together with the city going forward.
Can I speak?
Certainly.
Whether you go forward with the vote or not, it doesn't matter. Joe's right. I mean, in two weeks, we're not going to know the budget. We're not going to know because in two weeks, we're going to still have this crisis. And you can hold, you already had your public hearing, so the public hearing's not open. It's up to you to vote. So whether you vote or not, to me, it really doesn't matter because the fact is we're going to have to negotiate again. This is not 2008 with the crisis of what it was. This is a whole severe different crisis. We don't know what we're going to get from this state because right now all rainy day cash, free cash that the states have and send into small businesses, hospitals and everything else. So I don't know what we're going to get. We were supposed to get an increase because everything was going great for everyone, but unfortunately it is worse than, it's worse than 2008. So like I said, I'm going to vote president, it doesn't matter, but you can present it. We'll have to work on it. We've always worked on it. Together, we can figure out what we're going to do because let me tell you something right now. 45% of the mayors are saying we're fine for this year, this year, July it ends. They're going to lay off non-essentials. So they're already crying to the state that we can't even, they can't financially make it. A couple of them have a receivership. So this is what we're looking at. We are looking at a lot of things that, you know, we're depending on the government on, you know, check this, this, that, and that. We have no idea what's going to come down. I've talked a lot with the governor and other mayors, like I said, it's scary. It's not something that right now I can even predict because the fact is people are looking at laying off their employees. People are looking at renegotiating some of the bargains, some of the unions, some of everything else. So it's, it's pretty bad out there. So you can, you can vote on it, send it forward. We're all going to work together. Jonathan, I want to thank you very much and also Dr. Sapphire because yes, you work very closely and also you're CFO with ours and work very closely on what we can do. And of course our children are our priority. Everyone is our priority right now, but the fact is we don't know what our budget's going to be at all, at all. We're working on that right now and we've already, we're very, put it this way, because of the work of all of us together, we're a little better than most of the city. So we're fortunate at that one. I don't see us purchasing the preschool. So you can save $4 million right there. We still have the contract to next year. This year, I don't see anything purchasing anything big right now to be truthful, but like I said, we have to take one day at a time. So, and that's my opinion. Whether you voted or you table it for two weeks, in two weeks, I am not going to be able to give you any significant changes because right now our peak is for two weeks. So I have no idea what we might need funding right away. Right now, we can say, oh, we're fine, but I have no idea what's going to happen in this surge in two weeks. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's just see how it plays out. I don't think, you know, two weeks from now, we're going to vote the same budget that we, we've got on the table tonight. All I'm saying is that we might have more information. We may get more input from the community and that's my purpose. So I'll make a motion that we table the vote on the budget for two weeks.
I second.
Okay, discussion. Joel?
So in this meeting, you've already closed the public hearing. Are you intending instead to continue the public hearing until our next meeting? At this point, we would not be able to receive additional testimony from the public as the hearing's been closed. So I mean, I'm not opposed to it being continued to allow more people to speak. I just think we need to make it clear on the record that the hearing will that the hearing will be continued, not closed tonight.
Well, what I thought is that people will get ahold of us through email, which they can do, public hearing or not, whether it gets into the red, it can be distributed to the committee. It may not go into the record as the public hearing, but I don't know what the essential difference of that is. I don't know that we'll open it up for public input. We only had two people speak tonight. But certainly, people do have a way of expressing themselves. And we should share whatever information we do get, whatever feedback we do get. Kathy?
Yeah, my memory, my recall is that we usually don't vote it the night we do the public hearing. Usually, we try to, you know, assimilate the feedback we've gotten, and then we then bring it up at the, you know, at the next meeting to actually vote the budget that goes forward. So I think having some time to digest what's been put forth, what the situation we're in, you know, thankfully, all the new positions tend to be a lot of student support and things that we need to react to a crisis like this. You know, there's nothing, there's nothing unnecessary at all. It's all very, you know, there's no new curriculum in it. So there's nothing really discretionary. And I just think having a little time to digest what we've heard and think about where we're at in the next week or two, and then make the vote. If it doesn't change, it doesn't change.
Any further discussion? So we have a motion and a second. Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Mayor taken. Mayor taken. Are you there, mayor?
It's okay, yes. Roll call vote, present.
We're voting on whether to table the vote.
I'm just voting present, because I don't want to get in trouble. I'm voting present. You don't need my vote, you only have one missing. So I'm going to vote present, because like I said, whether you table it or not, to me, it's not going to make a difference right now. But so I'm just going to vote present.
Ms. Watson?
Yeah.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
It carries. I didn't hear what you voted, Samantha.
Yeah.
Yes. So it carries five in favor and one abstained. Present, excuse me. So we will take this, we will vote this two weeks from tonight. And we'll move on in the agenda. What we have to do is find it. To the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove? There's not a whole lot in it. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, no. Maria, roll call vote.
Mayor taken.
She's out of California.
Yes, I'm dying to get a cup of tea. Yes, every time I go get up to get a cup of tea.
Ms. Watson?
I don't wait anymore of all calls, I need a cup of tea.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yes.
I'm going to get a cup of tea, I'll be right back.
Okay. We're going to move on to our subcommittee reports. And first up is the personnel subcommittee meeting of April 2nd and of the superintendent's search, and also April 8th. They were both just one item agendas, so I think you can put them together.
Thank you very much, President. I just want to recognize Dorothy Pressler has been hanging on for the last two hours patiently to participate in this conversation. So thank you, Dorothy. So we met on April 2nd, and April 8th. We also had personnel meeting on the 3rd, but that had to do with the GTA. So we'll do the second meeting for personnel, which was to discuss the process and determine the superintendent's search committee candidates and a slate to put forward, which we decided earlier tonight. So I do want to thank all the applicants that came forward, who volunteered to be in one of these positions on the search committee. We had not a ton of applicants, but we had about eight parents. We had about seven community members apply. We had three administrators, we had five teachers, we had one student. We didn't, for the vocational piece, we didn't have a vocational teacher, but we do have an applicant that is in the trades. We did not have any principals apply, and we did not have a middle school teacher apply. But we worked within those confines, under the guidance of Dorothy, and came up with a slate of candidates put forward tonight. I did email everyone what that slate looked like, just to have an advance and to have it on the screen. But right now, I just wanted to give Dorothy a chance to maybe get some of her reflection on what her experience with us was tonight when we picked this slate, compared to how she's worked with other committees.
So I would say, when we started the subcommittee meeting this afternoon, we talked about the idea of putting together the search committee was to put together a group that the school committee felt could work collaboratively together to get to decisions. And also, that there was a variety of perspectives represented on the search committee, or in the screening committee or search committee, so that people, different people looking at the applications would look through particular lenses and could bring that, bring those different perspectives to the decisions that the search committee would ultimately make. And I think that, you know, listening to the various personnel subcommittee members talking about their thoughts about putting together a search committee that met those criteria was a good discussion. You know some of the people, obviously, I don't. But I think care was taken to look at the different perspectives that would be brought, the different backgrounds that people had, their ability to be collaborative members of the committee, and so forth.
Thank you, Dorothy. Another thing, as we went group by group, we really tried to get a good diverse representation of members, not only in who they were, but where their work location was. We actually looked at male versus female. You know, we really tried to bring a very diverse slate that represented as much interest as possible in the right way to the committee. And through that discussion, there was a motion to put forward a slate that I'll tell you. Just note, too, at one point, when we were discussing the parents, we actually had Dorothy pull a few names out of a hat, because we had such great applicants. So there was a variety of conversation and hat picking and things like that that went into our decision. So it wasn't necessarily easy. But I think and commend the personnel subcommittee that worked on this, because we did do our due diligence to get a good slate forward that is trustful and a group that we can depend on to bring us a good candidate for a superintendent. So I didn't know if anyone had any questions first, or if I should just put forward the motion that was the recommendation from the subcommittee, which is what was basically in the email that I sent out as far as the names and representation, and then have a discussion. So I don't know how you want to go about doing this. Jonathan?
I had, I just want to tell everybody that I recused myself from the meeting earlier this evening. And I'm going to be recusing myself from this vote, as I had some complaints about some comments that I made in the first meeting. And the perception is that I have preconceived notions about who should be on it. And so I'm going to refuse myself, as agreed with the president of the GTA, which I did. So I'm going to, at this point, turn over the gavel, the non-gavel, but the chairmanship to the vice chair, Melissa Texera. And I'm going to leave the meeting completely, and text me when you want me back. Okay?
Okay.
I mean, you can probably just stop video, stop audio.
I'm not even supposed to be here. Bye.
Okay. So let me just say this, before I put the slate forward, and I did put it in the notes that really isn't public, the email that I sent to you. But when we came to picking the teachers, because there was not a middle school applicant, we made a substitute for that. And also, the fact that we did not have a principal apply, we also put a substitute person in that category that was once a principal. So we didn't, we did have to make a little bit of adjustment for this slate. But I think we definitely hit the targeted areas that we wanted to, as far as getting the good group representation. So I'm going to go through this very quickly, just to name off the applicants, which is the slate, I'll do it by name and what their group is. And this was the motion going forward. The motion from the personnel subcommittee was to recommend to the full committee the following slate for approval of the superintendent's search committee. And the representation on that committee is, the three teachers would be Rachel Rex to represent the high school, Janet Donovan, who is a math coach. We chose her for the middle school piece. And then Melissa Desmond as the elementary school representative, for the vocational representative. Former school committee member, Tony Gross, applied. He applied as a community member, but also had that dual role for the vocational or the trade representation. We had one student, Cameron John Mune. The municipal employee put forward and confirmed through a conversation with Chairman Pope was James Distino. Three parents, this was the hat that we picked from, Sharon Bill Abrams, to represent a high school parent. Christine Morey, I hope I'm saying that right, as the middle school parent representative. And Cory Pinkham, as the elementary parent representative. Two community members, Bill Melvin and Maggie Rosa. One district administrator, that would be Patricia Wegman, our special ed coordinator. One principal, we chose Greg Box, even though he's an administrator now. He was once the principal at East Gloucester. And one student, the court specialist, Erica S. Morris. And I still move that motion, and hopefully, a second for discussion. So we have a motion and a second. So discussion. I think I gave some information on this, and I am sure Samantha and Kathy can also weigh in. Again, we had to make a little bit of an adjustment. But I think we have a good group. So I'm going to let Kathy or Sam speak first, because they were firsthand in picking this slate.
Okay.
So do I, Kathy?
I'll go first. As Dorothy and Melissa both have said, we tried to make sure that the committee was a diverse committee. We wanted a mix of male and female. We wanted, obviously, plenty of educators, but not so heavily that we did not represent the end user or the customer, which are our families. So we tried to pick parents that obviously care about the district, but aren't necessarily former teachers, so that we were getting somebody who was not so engrossed in the educational industry, that they would, you know, kind of bring a little bit different perspective. I think we had, you know, some very strong administrators, and I'm glad that, you know, Greg can both provide his perspective as a principal, as well as his benefits as being the assistant superintendent. And I'm really excited about the student who stepped up to volunteer. I think he's going to be a terrific one of 14, not a quiet, not a quiet person as part of this committee. And I think it'll be, I think, a nice addition to hear from a well-spoken and a very dedicated student that we have. So I just think we tried to, we tried to have a nice blend to help us with this important part of the process.
Thank you. Sam, did you want to say something?
Sure. So Kathy covered most of it. But in terms of the teachers, so we have a high school representative, and then the math coach actually works at Beeman and Veterans. And then Melissa Desmond works at West Parish. So there's a nice sort of blend of representation of the elementary schools. And fortunately, we didn't get an O'Malley representative. And then Rachel Rex also covers the GTA perspective as well. So I feel like with what we got, we're covering a good perspective.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to add to the discussion before we put her to vote? Joel?
I have some questions about the process. So the gaps, as far as the positions that were not filled, did we, for instance, reach out to Principal Beatty and ask her to lean on staff to say, hey, we're still missing a volunteer? Did we lean on admin to lean on the principals and say, hey, we're missing a volunteer from the principals? What steps did we take when we noticed there were gaps to make sure that people who had, you know, relationships with these potential candidates were, you know, reminding them, we're looking for them?
So I can say, we didn't push anybody, we didn't push a particular person or teacher or staff to do anything. As you know, Laura was very active in updating the advertisement. It was in the newspaper again on the people that we were looking for. But we didn't necessarily push anyone in the school side to push someone to be on, to put or suggest to be on the committee. We didn't, we didn't do that.
It just seems like that would have been, you know, I think it was, would have been important, it would have been good to have a middle school teacher. And it doesn't sound like...
But they did, they did receive the email. The email went out to all staff. And I believe it was an al call that went out to all staff. So it's not like we didn't attempt to get in touch? Sam, did you want to say something?
I mean, not to sound snarky, but I, you know, everybody knows that we're hiring a new superintendent, right? So I think there's sort of, this is a mixed bag. There's a lot going on right now. And so this is probably put on the back burner for a lot of people. Teachers have a lot on their plates. I mean, we only got four, no, four, one, two, three, four teachers applying to be on the committee. So I was, I was a little disappointed by that. I was hoping we'd get more interest. So I think at some point, we just have to realize that teachers right now have their plates pretty full, as well as the principals. There's just a lot going on. And so I think with what we have, this is a good, this is a good group. I wish we were able to push back, but I would have been hesitant to push back more on principals and teachers right now, with everything else going on. That's just my gut on that.
I can just add, there are times in searches where the school committee does together their ideal slate of who's going to be on the search committee, and finds that there are gaps in who shows interest, and has to make some, the best job they can of making adjustments in that circumstance.
Is there anybody else before we put this to vote? Okay, everybody. Does anyone want to add, or are we ready to vote? Vote? Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Mayor taken. Mayor taken.
Yeah, I'm going to vote present, because right now, like I said, across the state of Massachusetts, people are doing hiring freeze. And people are not hiring, and we're looking at laying off. And you can use that lag money for everything else. And we're asking people, we asked Jim to return. So I am going to vote present, because my opinion is graced at the committee. But like I said, I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. So I'm voting present.
Watson?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
No.
And Ms. Prince?
Yeah. So the vote, six, three, two.
Three, yes, one present.
Yes, one present, one opposed. So the vote carried.
Jonathan Mercuse will also...
We have a recusal?
Jonathan Mercuse himself.
Oh, Jonathan Mercuse, yeah.
Yeah. Does it pass? Because if it doesn't, then I'll reverse my vote right now.
So the, it's the majority of the members voting, if I remember open meeting law correctly, and there's five of us voting.
Correct.
Jonathan Mercuse himself and Laura Daphner. So there's five members voting, and three is the majority. Dorothy?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to think really fast about what, so it, it's members present and voting that would determine the majority.
Right, and we have five present.
Okay, then I'll stay with my vote.
Thank you. Yeah. So the vote passes. So we have a slate. So the next would be notifications, and I'm sure Laura would love to do that, but Laura is not with us for a little bit. She's on her Passover celebration, but we will get notified. Dorothy, can you talk, while you're here, and you wait so patiently, can you talk a little bit about, you know, how we discussed if someone can't do it and training with Zoom? Because actually, next Tuesday is the training session. So...
Okay, so...
Do you have any cards over right now, or...
So in the world we're in, obviously, we're not having in-person meetings. And since this, you know, since we've been shut down and not been able to have in-person meetings, we've actually done a couple of orienting of the search committee through Zoom, which has worked fine. A couple of committees have been doing their screening committee interviews through Zoom. We've actually had a couple committees where the screening committee has done their interviews through Zoom, and they've been working out well. But the search committee members will need to understand that they will be doing this virtually as opposed to in person, just like all the other business that we're conducting in the municipal side. And the other thing we talked about at the subcommittee was, once we get back to the slate and, you know, tell them they've been selected for the slate, we want to verify that they're able to serve. If they're not able to serve for the, for the slots where there was more than one person and we, there was choices to be made, that because there was, the decisions were so hard of which choices to make, that probably the best thing to do would be just to put the, the people who did not, who, who weren't, let me see if I can describe this right, the people who weren't chosen, just put those names in a hat and pick out the person who would fill in as the alternate for the person who can't, who can't carry out the responsibility.
Okay. And let me ask you this, how do, are you just going to ask them, will you, once we notify them, or we'll notify them probably tomorrow that they've been accepted, do you reach out to them? Do you get the contact? Like, how does this work? That you get in touch with them all, tap into their experience with Zoom to find out how it's going to work going forward with each individual? How is that going to work over the next...
Well, I can certainly do that. You know, if someone, whoever the appropriate person in the district is can get me their contact information, I can contact each of them and talk to them about the process from here and how it would work. And the dates, obviously, the dates are, are pretty important, too.
Right. So it says on our, on our advertisements, the committee member training is April 14th. Tell me what that, what that day looks like from the upper perspective.
So, so we get the committee together, we do some introductions. One of the things that the committee will need to decide, or the subcommittee will need to decide is how, who's chairing it, selecting a chair for themselves. And then basically, I'll, I guess I would, I usually provide them with a paper packet. I guess I'll have to send that to them electronically ahead of time with information about how we move forward, information about the open meeting law, information about conflict of interest, information about confidentiality, all the things that they need to know to carry out their responsibilities as members of the screening committee. And it usually, it's a, it's not a terribly long meeting, kind of depends on how many questions people have, but it would take, you know, somewhere between an hour, an hour and a half, that we would get together and, and sort of get ourselves oriented and ready for the next step of reviewing the applications and so forth.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions to Dorothy before you say goodnight? Nope. Dorothy, do you have anything else to add before you take on this new adventure? I'm, I'm excited about it.
You know, I, it's, I sometimes sit in on the, the selection of the screening committee and sometimes don't, but based on the discussion at the Personnel Subcommittee today, I'm looking forward to working with all those people. I think it's going to be great.
Yeah, you have a great group, no doubt. All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Have a good night, Dorothy.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Don't forget to ask John to come back.
Yeah, I sent him a text. I don't know, he might be hanging in somewhere. He's on the panelist.
He probably went to go get teed like I did.
So I'm just going to continue a little bit because I have a report, and I'm going to lean on Dr. Sapphire for the, so we met with the GTA on Friday, April 3rd, to negotiate the change in working conditions. And what I can say is, from the beginning of the week, which was April or March, March 30th until Friday, we came a long way. We had received proposals from the GTA early in that week, and then we got some guidance from the Board of Education, and then came forward to our meeting on Friday, and it was a very collaborative and successful negotiation to change the working conditions. And I just commend everybody involved in that conversation on Friday because on Monday or Tuesday, we were very, very far apart in our proposals. So I know we heard a lot earlier in the meeting about all the wonderful things that the teachers are doing now, so I don't really think it's necessary to go through the memorandum. But can I see a show here? Has anyone not seen the memorandum? Because I believe it was sent out right away by Dr. Sapphire. It's about six pages long, and then we added the Families First Coronavirus Response Act right to the document. I didn't know if, if Dr. Sapphire, because you and Naomi basically came up with this language, I didn't know if you just wanted to talk about any highlights without getting into a long, drawn-out discussion about what's in the memorandum before we approve it.
Right.
But I thought I'd leave it up to you, the educator, or I can just give the highlights? It's up to you. I'd rather hear it from you.
You, you don't want me to be long-winded, did I hear?
No, you can be long-winded, but the way you say it, I mean, this is your baby. You know, you and Naomi worked very well together to get this, this, this language forward.
Right.
So...
Yep. Well, you know, there's a, you know, of course, beyond the introduction, there's information about full pay and benefits. There's a recognition that we cannot replace, you know, the traditional school day with remote learning, that we would be establishing, though, a structured, meaningful, productive learning for approximately half the school day. There's a listing, then, of expectations for, for teachers about preparing work, working together with the principals so they have an understanding both of how the schedule's going to work, but also the types of content delivery that's going to be provided for their children. There's some online staff meeting time, grade level meetings each week as well, expectations that they will part, plan and participate in virtual meetings, hopefully as live as much as possible. There's a list of, of things that we're calling upon our special education members to, to take care of in, in working with our, our children. And the evaluation, you know, I, we're, we're waiting for something from the, the state. It, it doesn't make too much sense at this point to hold any timelines between now and the end of the school year, and there's language that addresses that as well. We had heard earlier something about MCAS. I'm not hearing anything other than that the legislature is proposing giving the commissioner authority to make a decision about MCAS. And, and my impression is that he sees the handwriting on the wall, but we'll have to wait and see what that's about. There is information about the extent of direct communication and interaction with each of the students. And then, you know, there's some mention about the extent to which we can maintain confidentiality and student privacy standards using remote learning and different platforms. It was mentioned earlier in this meeting that grading assessments and progress reports that we're using a credit, no credit scoring system, and there's a host of reasons, beginning with equity, as to why that is in fact the case. The, then it moves into specific aspects of contractual arrangements with teachers, and if somebody comes down with the coronavirus, what can we expect? Unit members who are on leave and what the status is of their situation is, our ability to try to accommodate teachers who, for any reason, are constrained from adhering to the schedule. We have spoken about teachers working together as collaboratively and as collectively as possible, sharing information, even sharing presentations. The model we want is one that is collective, collaborative, and hopefully as cohesive as possible. We will accommodate as best we can for, for staff members who simply cannot participate. Then we would be looking to the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, and, and there's, there's a number of stipulations, and that particular regulation, that law is at the bottom of this particular MOU. We talked about workdays, we talked about the evaluation, and the rest is, for the most part, boilerplate that we agree to the above mentioned would not replace classroom instruction, that the MOA doesn't constitute a practice or precedent, including any future public health issues, and that things may change, and that we would negotiate what we needed to negotiate, and that this constitutes the agreement between the school committee and the Gloucester Teachers Association.
Excellent, thank you. So Jonathan's back. But, so I guess that's my report. I know we're going to be voting on this. I don't know, has the GTA ratified it yet? They probably have some post due requirements, but evidently it seems to be in plane and motion already. But I think we can vote on it. I don't see a reason why we can't vote on it tonight.
Okay.
So Jonathan, do you want, you want to take over?
Sure, I'll take over. The, so what's before us is, is the MOU between the GTA and the Gloucester School Committee, and it's about how we're going to deliver remote learning for the students. And I assume that I missed part of it, but that Dr. Sapphire went over the, the general terms of the MOU. It has, we didn't get much with our, with this packet. Has everybody seen it? I mean, I know, I was on the negotiating team, so I know that. Has everybody seen the MOU?
I haven't seen it. Rich sent it out right afterwards, like it was, him and Naomi developed it, the date within a day, and it went out.
Once we, once we knew that the negotiations were going to be public, I sent it out to the entire committee, not just the negotiating team.
Right. But the, the agreed upon, I mean, there was very, very, very little change between what we presented and what was agreed upon.
Yeah.
But there was some, right? Just language mostly.
Well, I can certainly reshare it again.
Okay. There was no significant changes. All right, so, oops, do we want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the Gloucester School Committee and the Gloucester Teachers Association regarding the change of working conditions over the COVID-19 issue. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Maria, roll call vote?
Mayor taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yeah.
Clarence?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
And Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
So it carries unanimously six to zero. The... I don't see it on my, the, the agenda that I printed off, but I believe there was an updated version in which we took up the school calendar about April vacation. Is everybody aware of that issue, or is there an agenda that actually has it on it?
It was supposed to have been on the agenda.
I didn't see the agenda, but I knew we were going to talk about it because of the emails from...
I, I'm just saying, I, I printed off an agenda at, and I know there were, it got redone at some point, but I'm not sure which, which version I have. It doesn't say revised or anything on the top to somebody. Is there an agenda that has...
The one that went out at 7:20 AM today did not have it.
Did not have the, the school calendar. Then we will have to take that up at our next meeting. But the, we can talk, we can, we can just state what the issue is. The issue is that the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has basically okayed the four days of April vacation to be used as, as regular school days and count against the required 185 days, which if we use would allow us to get a, you know, stop school four days earlier than we're currently scheduled. But we're not going to discuss it. I'm just stating what it is, and we'll take it up at our next meeting. Joel?
When did that come out? Because if it came out within the last 40 hours, this would be something that could not have been reasonably anticipated by the chair, and we couldn't take care of it tonight.
Rich, do you know when that was issued?
Last Friday, the commissioner sent an update.
So that's not within 48 hours.
Yeah, the problem with next week is, the following week is vacation week, and...
Well...
We meet every week, though.
We're going to meet next week.
No, no, I'm just saying, in terms of when you, you know, it's unfortunate that you may have to vote on it next week as opposed to tonight. So we give people ample, and while I'm speaking, the, we had the principals ask teachers, and apparently, I think the association also did its own canvassing, it's because they sent me some results, and overwhelmingly, the teachers are in favor of continuing learning over the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of, of the vacation week.
Joel?
Again, whether we vote tonight or not is fine. My question is, this is to help make up for lost time. We'd still go out to the 185 date that we're allowed to, and this would just add four more days. We lost, whatever it is, three weeks, we'd have these four in, or would this be, we start scaling back in June instead of going all the way out to where we could go in June?
That's, that's correct. So, but I don't see any way around just putting it off until next week.
Wait, I'm sorry, which, Jonathan, which is correct? That we are going to go all the way to the 185th day?
I don't think so, if I may. I, I believe that we would only, let's say we're going to the 185th day right now, which is June 23rd, but then we have the April vacation. We can chop four days off of the 185 and bring it down to 181. That's my understanding.
Yeah, even though we lost three weeks.
He did, in fact, refer to 181st day would be the obligation if you use the four days of the vacation. The, the agenda does say on the bottom, the listing of matters, those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Does that language give us the school committee, the...
Well, like I say, I, I, I anticipated it. I assumed it was on the agenda, but because we said it was on the agenda, but I'm not seeing an agenda that actually has it on it. That's, so I'm not sure that I can call that. But I don't, and I don't think there's a big issue. If 80% of the teachers are in favor, I, I, you know, and we voted a week from Wednesday, that's still a few days before April vacation. Everybody's doing what they're doing already, and they would just be continuing to do it. Everybody's doing what they're doing already and they would just be continuing to do it. You know, and they're not going anywhere, right? In theory.
In theory, I'd like to be able to send out a notice that I think that we can anticipate that in my opinion, we can anticipate that the school committee is going to approve maintaining school in session during the April vacation and reformalize Wednesday night.
I can't imagine, I can't imagine telling kids to get on a schedule and then having a week off right afterwards.
I'm just like, before we vote next time, just a little bit of, I guess, backup. It just seems interesting to me that we've lost so much time already with the days and simply there was no in-person or virtual instruction. Why are we getting four days back? We wouldn't just add them back in and still go out as far as we can to try and as much education to these students as possible. It's not like we're, otherwise we'll hit 180, right? We're not even close to hitting 180, with or without the four days. So why wouldn't we say, April vacation is going to be a teaching vacation and we're still going into June? Because we want to make up for as much lost time as possible so we can do as much recovery as we can before next year starts. So if we're not going to do that, if we are going to reduce it by four overall, I'd just like to hear the rationale behind that.
Well, whether you want to hear it or not, the rationale is it's contractual. The school calendar was voted last year by the school committee and accept and approved by the GTA. And in that calendar, they have April vacation off. And the holidays that are stated, I mean, we could go weekends and holidays if we were, if we were able to do that. But we have to deal with the union, so that's, that's why. I mean, we either use the four days in April or we use the four days in June.
They weren't instructing in March.
Well, I understand that, but.
Going by the contracts kind of out the window because they were supposed to be in front of students six hours a day or whatever it is. That's all out the window, right? The goal here is to provide education to the students. This just seems like.
I completely agree with you, Joel, but I'm just saying it's, we're just trying to follow the contract and the rules set forth by the legislature and the Department of Education.
Question?
Samantha?
So this recommendation came out after the MOU discussion, is that right? Yeah, so I guess in theory, if it hadn't, if it had come out before, we could have had this conversation as part of.
As part of that, correct. But once again, I think we're venturing into a violation of the open meeting law by, in a sense deliberating this issue. So I'm going to stop the discussion right now. The superintendent can send out whatever he'd like. But I just, you know, we gotta, I don't know how we can vote it tonight. So that being said, we shall move on to, I assume that we heard a report from the ad hoc communications subcommittee? No, okay. Laura is not here, it being the first night of Passover. So who's, who's the vice chair of that committee? Samantha, would you like to report out on what went on?
Sure. So it's just a one item agenda. We talked about the creation of a school committee Facebook page. And really what we came up with is that the idea behind a school committee Facebook page would be to get clear messaging out about our meetings, when they are, what the agendas are, how to contact us, and any updates that are necessary. There wouldn't be any discussion of opinions on certain votes. It's just a pure, another way of getting information out there. And also to sort of echo the administration page, the Gloucester Public School Facebook page. So the idea would be that we would have one or two people on the school committee have posting privileges. All commenting and messaging will be turned off so that there will be no deliberation on the page, purely information only. And there'll be a canned, there would be in theory a canned message that would say, thank you for your question or concern. Here's the proper way to get in touch with the school committee. And then what we would need from the whole committee is some guidance on some policies that we could develop on what kinds of postings. We would, we would be comfortable with as an entire committee because that one or two people who have posting privileges are speaking for the entire committee. So before we move further, we wanted to sort of have a discussion around if you need clarification, if you have any questions about the purpose of it, and maybe some ideas on policies that would help you feel comfortable. Melissa, you can jump in at any time too if I'm missing something.
Yeah, I would just say we had a really great conversation about, about communication, which is awesome, and how we can improve because there's always room for improvement. But just to come forward and ask for approval to do a Facebook page without knowing the rules and how it's going to operate, we felt was a little premature. So I didn't know if there was any feedback from members that weren't involved in the conversation. I know Kathy was watching and observing the meeting and actually asked the question. But I think this subcommittee just needs some guidance on what their expectations are. You know, do you agree with the no commenting? Do you agree informational only? I mean, how do others envision it? And then what are your expectations for the management of that page? Before, instead of starting from nothing, we figured we'd see if there's any feedback and then go back and start developing best practices, how other school districts do it, and things like that.
Okay, Joel?
I think what was said tonight makes sense. My only concern or advice or whatever is that this will only be as effective and it will only be, it'll only be effective if it's widely used and will only be widely used if it is reliable. You know, we have a website that isn't used because it's missing information or it's confusing to find information or it has the wrong information, right? And so same thing, you know, otherwise that website would be what we needed because people will get the answers they're looking for from that website, but they can't because it doesn't have it. So this Facebook website needs to be accurate and up to date and accessible. Otherwise, we're just wasting our time here by putting another thing on the internet that no one understands and people stop using. So I think it's great also the shareability of Facebook, that parents will be able to take posts from this page and share it out on their pages, I think is going to make communication hopefully easier. We can't control whatever conversations happen on those other people's pages when the post gets reposted. But again, I just think whatever this setup is, we need something in place so that it remains up to date and reliable. Otherwise, it won't get used and it won't achieve any of the goals that we're trying to. And I have no idea. I pay someone to take care of my social media, my firm, and that requires like a small percent of what this page will require with all the things that are going on in this district. So I don't know how we do that, but it needs to be done, I would think.
Samantha?
So, yeah, so I think the goal would be to try to leverage our communication efforts as a district by having both a school committee page and a district wide page. So the more that we're sharing each other's posts, the more sort of touch points we'll have with the community. I also did, I came off Facebook during this because it, like I said, it was too much noise, but I tested it last night to see if by not having an account, can I see the district wide page? And I could, I could see everything. So it is another way for the community. It's a place where we can send the community to say, you don't have to have a Facebook page, but you can still see updates if you just search, you know, facebook.com slash Gloucester School Committee. So it is just another nice way for the community to get real time updates on what's happening. And then if we, like we talked about at the meeting, if we decide to continue with this virtual option for people to view our meetings at some point, that's another really good way to get the method out.
So let me just see if I understand what the goal is. The goal is to, first of all, to get accurate information out about meetings. And so there are a lot of meetings. There are school committee meetings. We know what they are, but do you envision it expanding out to things like site based meetings or, you know, different BTO meetings or those sort of things? I mean, I've always, I've always wished, I've never figured out how to do it, that there was some sort of clear, you know, someplace you could go and you could see, you know, when the school play was at Plum Cove and when the, you know, you can go to the high school website and see. Sort of wade through when the, when the sports teams are playing, but there's no place you can, you can't go to the same place and see when the thespians are playing or whether the dark sides are playing. And, you know, I've always had this vision, it'd be great if there was someplace you could just see everything, everything that's going on. But that's a lot of work.
Yeah, so there were, there was one person who responded to, Laura put out on the MASC listserv a question about this. And one person said, we have a part-time communications person that does a lot of this work. And so I think to start, it would be just to get school committee information out. I think the district wide page is really the place where those updates really should be about what's happening in the schools. And then the school committee page can share that on its page. So it's just another place for people to see it, but I think it's going to be too much to ask somebody to post all of that information. I think it will be purely just, here's our agenda, here's where you can find documents that we've, we reference, like about the building committee. You know, there are things that, or this is when the building committee meeting is. It's one place for people to be able to go and get accurate information about when our meetings are, what the agenda is and how they can ask questions. To me, that's, that was how we sort of.
That sounds fairly straightforward to me and doable.
Yeah.
Kathy?
Yeah, I think it's going to be really helpful to have that push out of our information, what we're meeting, what are we talking about at our meetings? I think people would like to know, you know, what business we're taking up. I also envision it something like when we approve the school calendar, it can be put on both Gloucester Schools and on the Gloucester School Committee website. You know, stuff that, you know, maybe new policy, when, you know, when we did the acceptable use for technology, you know, things that are significant information to families, it would just be another way to push that information out. So I was kind of excited that, you know, we'll have an active presence as a school committee to help promote our schools as well.
So what more guidance would you like?
So Melissa, just to be clear, so we'll come, we will develop policies and then bring it back to the whole school committee to then vote on the policies around the Facebook page. Is that right?
Yeah, I think Laura was pretty active on the listserv from MASC. So there could be a way of reaching out through that to get, I mean, other districts have Facebook pages and we can find out what best practices are there and see if we can get a copy of their policies. MASC may even have a policy, I'm not sure. We may even have stuff in our own current policies that address some of these concerns. So we just got to start looking around and we'll develop something and then bring it back to the full committee.
Sounds good. Good luck. Looking forward to it. What's left? Massachusetts School Building Authority update. Let's see, next week we met, well, we met on the second, I believe. We looked at the visioning of what the interiors, the designs would look like. And they'll bring that back. What would, where they're at right now is they're trying to get a sense of what they should put in the package to get prices on. And that will be the next step is that they will, the designers and the OPM will be sending out a package to estimators to get prices. So we have a better sense of what, what the cost will be. And those will have to be part of the submittal that will go to MSBA somewhere towards the end of June. But right now they need to get them started on the, on getting prices. Melissa?
And so I wasn't able to watch the meeting unfortunately. I think I was in another meeting at the same time, so I had no idea what was discussed. So based on what you just said, so this package that's going out, is it specific to what you think you want? Or is it like a wish list and you're just trying to get prices so that you can make a determination going forward?
Well, much of it is, is the building. And, you know, it's not something that there's a whole lot of choice about as far as foundations and that sort of thing. There are things that we discussed. And for example, we, they talked about putting lentils over the tops of windows. And they was basically stated that they, they made, they did not make a structural difference. They were simply a decorative element. Everybody weighed in. Most people seem to think that we should get a price on it. But, you know, what I stated was it's, it's better to get a price and, and take things out when we submit the final package than it is to not know what something costs. I mean, we're talking about a $70 million project and, you know, if something costs, we don't know what it costs. Let's just say, people think it has some value. It adds value to the building in some manner. And, but you don't know what it costs and you didn't find out, then, then you don't know. But if you put it in and you can get a price and then you say, well, we're over, we're over where we want to be, then you can take it out. So that was, that was my what the case I made to them for including these lentils. So it's for the purpose of pricing. The pricing will come back to us. It's not going in to MSBA. It's going, it's coming back to the building committee. The, the, there's going to be a presentation next week to both the city council and the school committee. And after that, and when, after we get feedback from those two committees, the building committee is meeting on Thursday, and they'll vote the actual package to be priced. Okay, then it comes back, we talk about the pricing and then before the final submittal goes in. So that's, that's, did I explain that process correctly, I hope?
No, it makes sense. And this, the building meeting is online somewhere, right? I can go back and watch it?
You can go back and watch it. I, I, it's not on the school, it wouldn't be on our website. It's going to be on the city website.
City website, yeah.
You can ask James where he put it. I know he recorded, it was recorded.
Okay.
I don't know where it ended up though. I don't know where it's, where it is. I can find out.
Okay, great.
Joel?
That, to segue off of that, I think it'd be very helpful if the committee was gently reminded at their next meeting, this is being recorded audio and video. Like I said in the email, since the committee, if I wanted to, you know, take the override, I could cut off that video from that recording and really, you know. take the override, I could cut up that video from that recording and really, you know, share something online, that would be a 45 second clip and would be, would make the committee look good with some of the things that are being said and the way they're being said. There was some stuff being said in jest semi seriously. And so I just think it'd be important that they remember that they're all on camera, this is all being recorded. And this will be a very, you know, tough fight politically to get the city to rally behind this big price tag. And if there are people who want to prevent it, we don't want to give them, or we don't want the building committee giving them ammunition to use in the fight against this project.
I think that's good, that's good input for all committee meetings, as I found out at our last Personnel Subcommittee meeting, the the transition from knowing, looking at your audience and knowing who they are and and then, and the difference between having your audience be anybody forever, you know, is is a little different and take some adjustments. So it's a lesson that we all need to learn and I will remind the building committee the next time we meet. I think that's, are there any other questions about the MSBA, about, is there any other business? Melissa?
It's not really business, it's kind of a sad recognition. One of our substitute teachers, Willie Greek, passed away either last night or today. He was in my class, class of 1983, and he worked as a substitute teacher. And so sad to learn that he passed away, which had to do with the COVID disease and probably some other underlying health issues. But I just wanted to mention him, he was a great guy.
Yes, he worked with Susan at that for quite a while. And she was, expressed the same response.
Yeah, condolences to the Greek family.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn? I just take that as a motion and a second from.
Yeah, I don't care, just good night.
And Maria, roll call vote?
Mayor taken.
Yes, good night, everyone, be safe.
Night.
Ms. Watson?
Yeah.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
Chairman Poe?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes, good night.
Night, everybody. Meeting's adjourned, thank you very much.